Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, July 13th, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence your devices. Would everyone please stand and join Mr. Paulson as he calls the roll?[24.34][24.34](Laughter). We can sit down now. We worked very late last night, I hope you all understand.
Commissioner Erickson?
I pledge my attendance.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Badami.
I'm here, believe it or not. All right. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kane as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To do fire job.
All right. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages your participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. The public comment portion of the North Forty Phase One application was closed last night, so we can no longer take public comment this evening on the matter. We continue to receive written comments numbering 650 and still counting. We do welcome verbal comments tonight that are not related to the North Forty Phase One application during verbal communications. If you plan on speaking this evening, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. You can turn the card into staff. That way I'll be prepared to state, to call you when it is your turn. To date, I do not have any cards. So, we do have written communications this evening for Desk Item Number Two. Have Commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Yes. Do they need more time? No. We do not have any requested continuances this evening. Subcommittee reports. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, Commissioners also serve on various town subcommittees. I asked this question last night, and I assume we've not had any committee meetings since last night? Correct. So, we have no Subcommittee Reports to share. Verbal communications. Would anyone like to speak to us at this time on any matter not related to the North Forty? Okay. Seeing someone come forward? I now call Robert Coyle to the podium. Please state your name and address, and please remember that you have three minutes to speak.
Oh. Robert Coyle, 14339 Oca Lane. This is basically concerning the overlayment of Oca Road and Oca Lane. You just resealed and re-gravelled it. Just want to bring it to your attention that there was an awful lot of gravel, and I have pictures of it, in your storm drains, and they have groveled and asphalted over the top of two storm drains. And do I take that up with you after they paint and finish the job to get it cleaned or the Planning Department? Okay.
Any further comments?
Well, I mean, they haven't finished yet. They haven't painted the lines, so I don't know exactly what part of the phase they're in.
All right, sir, we're not here to answer your questions. It's your time to provide speech, and I will have staff make a note of that so they can respond back to you.
And I would just offer that the Parks and Public Works Director is here, and so you can get his card, and then he will be in touch with you.
I now call Roy Moses to the podium.
Roy Moses, La Croix Court, Los Gatos. Mine's related to the same thing regarding the streets, so maybe I just need to get his card. And I'm concerned about what they are putting down on the streets and the type of asphalt that they're putting down. It's a rocky type of substance. It's not good for runners, not good for bikers. It makes your car, the noise in the cars louder, and I just disagree with whatever choices you're making and the vendors that you're choosing. This has happened before with the streets in Los Gatos. Sometimes they put an oil-based surface down, car tracks are left on them, they're permanent. It seems like every two years you have to redo the streets. So, I just don't thi, I think you're spending money needlessly rather than getting, coming to a consensus of the right type of streets to be put in our town, and that's what my concerns are.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Would anybody else like to speak to us this evening on a matter not related to the North Forty? Seeing no one come forward? We will move to our Consent Item, which is Item Number One, Approval of Minutes, for which we have no minutes to approve. So, we will move to our Public Hearing, which is continued from July 12th, 2016. Item Number Two, North Forty Phase One, Architecture and Site Application S-13-090, Vesting Tentative Map M-13-014. Requesting approval for the construction of a new multi-use, multi-story development consisting of 320 residential units, which include 50 affordable senior units, approximately 66,000 square feet of commercial floor area, which includes a market hall, onsite and offsite improvements, and a vesting tentative map. APNs 424-07-024 through 027, 031 through 037, 070, 083 through 086, 090, and 100. May I have a show of hands from Commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from Commissioners? Seeing none. Mr. Paulson, we are ready for the Staff Report.
So, tonight we're here to continue the Commission's Questions of the applicant. So, as you mentioned before, there is a report that contains items that were received from the public either at last night's meeting and/or via email for comments, as well as a document from Commissioner Hudes that relates to hillside views that I think was one of the topics that was still left to be discussed.
Okay. At this time, are there questions of staff related to process or procedure? Seeing none. Again, the public comment portion of the hearing was closed last night. This includes the applicant's presentation. Due to time restrictions, Commissioners were unable to complete their questioning of the applicant, and I believe we have more questions. I will look to the Commissioners to see if this is true. Yes, I see nodding of heads. So, applicants, you have been summoned. Please step up to the podium. I will look to the Commissioners. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. I believe we have a question that we started last night, and I would put it in the category of housing. I also have some questions that will follow about traffic and environmental, including the economic report, open space, look and feel, and yeah, those categories, which are the ones that Chair Badami suggested that we think about. So, within housing, there's this discussion, and I, first of all, I wanted to correct myself when I said that it looked like the height of Building A1 was 58 feet from existing grade. I think it's, first of all, I think it's Building B1, and it looked to me like it was 48 foot 8 inches plus 4 foot 6, 4.6 feet of grade adjustment, so that would be 53 feet 8 inches. And then with the elevator portion, it would be a total, so it'd be 53.8 plus 4.6, so it would be 57 and some fraction. So, I just wanted to say that that's my understanding. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be reflected in the grading plan where we do have our civil engineer here to go through.
It was a combination of the grading plan plus the elevation.
It does sound about right, though, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So, we were, and this relates to this next topic, which was about views, and so I wanted to ask, I think I started to ask last night, how do you define view corridor? I think it's used in, in the justification letter, and yeah.
It's our position that we were to use the vision statement, which talks about hillside views, and the look and feel of Los Gatos as a filter to which to look at and view the objective standards of the specific plan. And so, for example, look and feel and views of the hillsides led to the 30% open space requirement, or the height restrictions, or the setbacks. Again, we comply on all fronts because these are objective development standards. But to give you the perspective of the filter that we use, we have asked our architects to put together some presentations to kind of demonstrate how we looked at things. And while we're, so I'll call Paula Krugmeyer. You know, reflecting on the hearing last night, our answers to some of your questions, we have shown maybe some frustration because the discussion was at a zoning level or a specific plan level. It's at that stage that unit types and sizes and et cetera are discussed, and the specific plan was approved last year along with the housing element. So, that was some of the frustration. What we would like and what we would expect at this stage of approvals is a discussion about architectural style, materials, landscape palettes, et cetera. We have worked with your consulting architect on that. Ultimately, Mr. Cannon rendered his opinion on our application, which we shared with you last night. But those are the types of comments we would expect to be having at this level of, at this stage, and we would expect to not be discussing rewinding approvals on the objective design standards. But we would welcome talking about architecture, about, you know, landscape palette, about those types of issues, and we're willing to consider conditions of approval that would approve the design. We have, again, worked really hard with your consulting architect, and after five submittals, kind of got, we think, a really good result out, but those are the types of things we do want to discuss. But Paula, I'll give you an idea of how we looked at view corridors. She can probably touch about look and feel as well, but...
Yeah, I'll try to keep my questions pretty specific.
Okay.
So that, relating back to things that are in documents that are part of the planning application.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and distinguished members of the public. I'm Paula Krugmeyer of BAR Architects, and we're, we wanted to cover the topics of embracing views, as you have asked, as well as the look and feel on the architecture. First of all, I just wanted to acknowledge that being here last night, in addition to many other hearings, I have taken notes on every speaker's points, and I understand this is a very important topic to everyone within the town. So, it's something that we, as architects, took very seriously, as well as the look and feel, so we definitely wanted to present our thoughts and share our vision with you tonight. So, with that said, we have two parts of the embracing views. One of them comes from the views from Highway 17, which were studied in the EIR and later updated in July for our latest application, which is lower than our previous application in terms of height, based on the specific plan. So, we'll start with, from Highway 17, and then we'll move to examples within the town, and then we'll move to views from within the site. So, the, there are two views here. One is of what was in the EIR, and the other is updated as of July of this year, photos taken showing the heights of the buildings that are proposed. Is there a, so, these are the buildings proposed. We have four views here that are taken from the EIR-generated exhibits. The second one here, there is a key plan, so you can see, is it, can you all see where the view is taken on the key plan? Is that, it's right there, and there. So, this was when the buildings, when we had the moved-down buildings there, and then the lower image on the slide is what the current proposal is, which is now 35 feet instead of 45 feet. This image here shows the upper, the upper view is what we had at 45 feet, and the lower view is what we're currently proposing, what's in your package up for approval now. And then finally, this view is looking laterally, and as I'll show in the next slide, the, the hills are off to the right here, and the proposed buildings are basically not in front of the hillside. So, I think what these slides demonstrate that are created by an impartial third party is that the views of the hills are definitely, continue to be embraced from, as, as one passes through. And as I recall from many of the Advisory Committee meetings early on, that Los Gatos is kind of a gateway to the Santa Cruz Mountains, is, this view was very important. So, we'll continue on with other views within the site. So, what we did, the, the North Forty is at the top of the image, and then we took two examples. We, we had many examples, but given limited time, we're going to show two tonight. One is D for downtown, and the other is N for neighborhood. So, we'll start with downtown. And as we're downtown, what we see is that even one-story buildings occasionally block the views of the hills. And what, where we do find view corridors to the hillsides are straight down the axes of the streets. This is a much more common pattern of embracing the views of the Los Gatos community. What I, what I, you know, I've done a lot of looking at hillside views. I noticed that in the look and feel slides that we saw last night, there were about 70 images of how, of homes, and about three of those had views of the hills in them. So, I, I just want to make sure we have in perspective, what we had, that we have in perspective, the, the views of the hillside. So, anyway, I looked at all 70 photos. So, as we're going down North Santa Cruz, South Santa Cruz, excuse me, North Santa Cruz Avenue, there are views of the hillsides if you're in the center of the street. From North Santa Cruz Avenue, further north than this, the views of the hills are actually blocked by the sycamore trees. So, again, we found a lot of views of the hillsides, but a lot of them, a lot of times they're framed within the axes of streets. So, you have this interplay between, between buildings and hillside views. Moving on to the, the next example, what we did was we chose a number of neighborhoods, and we're showing the one in which the streets, Benedict's Lane and the streets near there, are actually rotated towards the hills. So, Benedict Lane has a lovely view of the hills that is directly down the axis of the street, and there are parts of Benedict Lane that have greater views of the hills, but those are areas that are not landscaped at all. So, again, a lot of times the landscaping, in addition to the buildings, is what is complementing and embracing the views of the hills. Moving on, just near there on Garden Lane, there are hills back there, and you can discern them, but again, this is an area where we feel like this very much is the look and feel of Los Gatos, and hillside views, in this case, are not necessarily embraced in favor of the landscaping in the foreground. So, just to kind of set the context, we did a lot of looking at the embracing of views, and what we'd like to show you here are four views from within the site that show what the views from the site will, will be, from within the site. So, the first one is parallel to the freeway. Again, we are further from the hills than downtown, much further, a couple of miles further from the hills. However, the hills are there. The next image I'm going to show you is from, by the way, these also, there's a key plan here, so you can tell where, exactly where these photos are taken. And these photos were all taken with the story poles up, so I know I'm not looking through a building in this case, I'm actually looking down a street. These are the, the key plan here, so there's the first view there. The second view is interesting in that when we're back in the transition zone, we will have a view here of the hillsides, but at the moment, the walnut trees that are no longer going to be there are blocking that view. To the contrary, as we go south on South A Street, we no longer get a view of the hills because the tall landscape of Highland Oaks blocks the views of the hills from that location. So, again, there's a kind of interplay between the height of the landscape and the, and the views. From this part of A Street, you, you will be able to see them. From the other part, you will not be able to see the hills. The next view is taken from the Lark District. It's right by the intersection between the Lark and Transition District, and it's taken over the community gardens. So, when you're in the community gardens, this is the view you will have. And our main impediment in this area are the existing buildings along, the commercial buildings along Los Gatos Boulevard, but to the extent that you can see the hills from those buildings, over those buildings that are already there, we do have embrace views of the ridge lines and the hillsides there. And then finally, we have a diagonal street on the, on the site, which is right there, North A Street, and as you come down this street, this will be a much more framed view. And what I did here was I drew the lines of the story poles on this slide. So, the story poles are here and here, and we're looking down at a two-story building, and just over that two-story building, you will be able to see the ridge line. So, that, that view corridor is a little bit more framed by buildings, but again, it's, it's there. So, that is the, the presentation we had on the embracing of hillside views, and we felt like it was very comparable to what we're seeing in other areas of Los Gatos.
Yeah, so as, as a follow-up to that, example one that you showed next to the freeway, there's a, there's a sound wall there, isn't there? You want to go back and show us where that would be?
The sound wall is along here, and there is parking, there's a setback, there's a, there's the sound wall, then there's some landscape, then there's some parallel parking, then there's a road, and then there's more landscape, and then there's the buildings. So, there's actually quite a bit of space here that, from which one will get this view. The sound wall will be lower and off to the right. The, the sound wall is typically lower than any landscaping will have.
So, yeah, so I had some questions about the layout of the site and how it relates to the views and how the housing is organized on the site. And I spent about an hour and a half on the site. We could go on a second visit, we could go Friday, and I couldn't, with the exception of the diagonal street, I couldn't find any interior location where I could see the views. Interior location, meaning one that's open to the public. And so, I walked down the area where the passeo is, spent some time where the park will be, and because of the arrangement of the buildings that are at an angle to that, and I'll, I'll illustrate that in a minute, it was not possible to see the hillsides. You know, I, I walked and I noted it at 12 different points, and as I said, there was only one, and that was at the diagonal street where I could see it. So, I'm sure there are other points, particularly as you get to the exterior, but in the interior, I had trouble. And in fact, not any point along the passeo, not any point within the park, not any point in the, in the service area, Service Road, except for the very end of it, the, or the road that is adjacent to the, to the freeway. And, you know, that, that was being blocked. So, I could not find another location, actually, in Los Gatos of comparable size where the hillsides would be as obscured as they are in this, in this particular layout. I think, and maybe I could illustrate with, maybe we could look at Exhibit 38. And a question's coming here in a minute, but I want to just relate that to my observations on the, on the site. And I wish the public had, had been able to see the interior, either that with photographs or somehow to see the orientation of the story poles across the site and the, and the, the way that the arrangement of the buildings, I think, is obscuring many, many of the sites. So, could you go to the next slide, please? So, that's good. Go, go back one, if you, yeah, there we go. So, I tried to, you know, the intersection of those lines is the middle of the North Forty plot, and the dominant hillsides here are El Sareno and El Sombroso. Behind El Sombroso is Loma Prieta, and Mount Um is actually in between those as well. And it's really interesting because they are about at a 45-degree angle from the center of the site, each of those. The dash line represents the general way that you can view from the site, given the grid pattern. So, could you go to the next, next slide for me? So, this is zooming in with that same, the, the solid lines representing the view of the hillside, and the dash lines representing the grid layout and the general direction of the views. And so, what I'm saying is that because of the way buildings are arranged on that grid, it pretty much blocks those views even as you walk along the interior of it until you get to the, to the exterior of it. And so, my question is, if you can go to the next slide, is it possible to have the streets laid out in a fashion that is 45 degrees from what's been proposed in a way that would, I think, truly allow you to see the hillsides from many, many more sites? And, you know, even if you, it's a little dark, but you can see that in the surrounding neighborhoods, there are curved streets that afford views as well. So, my question is, is it possible to lay out this so that, so that more views from the interior of this site could be achieved?
It's a very good question and a very good demonstration. As I sought to demonstrate with the views from Benedict Lane, which are even a little closer, is that these hillside views, even with rotated streets, will have basically a small view corridor down the center, given that all of the streets will be lined with street trees, as is the, the case in, in Los Gatos. This is jumping ahead a little bit to our look and feel conversation, and in the look and feel, we looked at, I've been the master planner on this project for eight years and have done master planning in a lot of different places, and what we looked at here was that the majority of neighborhoods in Los Gatos are oriented parallel to the arterial streets that they're next to. So, there are some curved streets, there are many curved streets in the hillsides, many curved streets. We're not in the hillsides. Our streets are more or less, not all, more or less parallel to the arterials that are near to ours, and our, our views are very similar to the views of neighboring residential districts and downtown that are similarly oriented.
My question is, could even some of the streets in the Phase One been oriented along 45 degrees from the way they're currently, or could some of them been curved? I mean, even in the drawings in the specific plan, there was a suggestion of a curve, and I know that there was testimony when the specific plan was being created, a number of residents made the strong suggestion to have some curved streets in there.
All right. I'm, I'm going to go back to a suggestion that was made in 2013. Did you want to do, talk about that? Okay, so, we looked, back in 2013, we received a suggested site plan that was rotated at 4, at 45 degrees from Los Gatos Boulevard. And when I, when I get to the look and feel part, I'll talk a little bit about walkability and block sizes and the idea about the balance between softscape and paving. In theory, the suggestion is great. Yes, we can have 45-degree angle streets. When you look at it practically on the site, given that there are some very large missing teeth from the Hirschman properties cut out of it, once you get to the potential use of diagonal streets, you, I just have to say it this way, you end up with a lot more paving and a lot more green space because it is less efficient. And when you have more paving and less green space, it didn't seem to us like the look and feel. It's, it's a fair It's a fairly simple geometric problem. In order to overcome that, we would have had to go to larger mega blocks to get that green space within the mega blocks. And we felt that the size, the block sizes that we have, that are comparable to the block sizes in the rest of Los Gatos, that are parallel to the arterials, and given the big missing teeth that we had on Los Gatos Boulevard, that we were able to provide the most open space by the plan that we had. And where we created the community garden, where we created the diagonal street, where we created other axes, we were embracing hillside views. We were balancing all these things. It's...
So just one last question on this. If you didn't have as many homes, but you did have them at the required density, at the required density, would it be possible to incorporate other street layouts such as we've discussed?
Well, I will answer in theory, and then Dawn and Wendy can answer more specifically. When I left here last night, one of the members of the public suggested that we could have a lot more green space if we built a tower next to the freeway. And I thought about that, and I said, "Yeah, that's true. You can have more green space." There's, there are different ways to gain more green space, even though we already exceed the quantity. Doing diagonal streets doesn't necessarily increase the amount of green space. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you please repeat your question?
Well, I said, in an attempt to maximize and actually have views of the hillsides, would it be possible to, you know, would it be possible to change the layout and configuration of the streets, perhaps by reducing the number of homes, but keeping the required density?
Well, if we reduce the number of homes on the same amount of land, then we have, by arithmetic, reduced the density. And then going back to the diagonal views again, again, going back to Benedict Lane, we, in comparing the view, the views that we have, the linear views that we have to the hills, we have similar views to Benedict Lane, which is rotated. And I think that that's where, the hills, if we go back to my slide, there's a green line. The hills are on two and a half sides of the site. Even though it's a little bit far away, they're on two and a half sides of the site. So we can orient those streets to embrace hillside views with a variety of directions and with open spaces like our community garden.
Okay, thank you.
Would any of the other commissioners like to add to the line of questioning? Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to ask a question. It's not related necessarily to hillside views, but it relates to views as it pertains to a small town character. So I know that, I know that a lot of the residents and friends of residents have reacted badly to seeing a mass of 35-foot-tall buildings from Highway 17 when they're coming home, including my own kids. But it did look like your position was that landscaping, the trees that are going to be planted, would be covering that up to a large extent. I just wanted to understand what, if this was, went forward as it was, what we could expect, or would it just be that we'd have to stare at a wall of 35-foot buildings?
The landscaping shown in the EIR was taken as trees after a certain number of years of growth. In other words, it's not just the first year. But the trees will, for the most part, all be higher than 35 feet. Some of the orchard trees, is the landscape architect here? Okay. Landscape architect is here and will be able to speak specifically about tree heights.
The EIR covered aesthetics and views. And as we have underscored already, the specific plan EIR, which was approved and adopted by Town Council last year, shows on the top, that was the aesthetic that was approved, so to speak. The proposal that we have in front of you is less impactful. From any objective standard, and we don't, again, you know, we do think we comply, I do want to answer Commissioner Huddis's question directly. The grid pattern has already started on the North Forty on the south side of the property. It started probably in early 2000s with the development of, essentially, the first phase of development on the North Forty with the medical office buildings. What happens now on that portion of the property is to kind of get locked in, because we do have a balancing act to do with infrastructure and other things. And so the answer is no on being able to orient streets 45 degrees and balance everything else we have to balance related to the objective standards of the specific plan. Having said that, as you move further north, we do start to introduce some diagonal streets. I don't, I'm not going to jump ahead, but the thought of that diagonal street is that it does plug in someplace. And there may well be future development where we do free up opportunity to introduce streets that aren't on the grid. But because development was already allowed to start in the 2000s with three relatively large buildings that are taller than any of the buildings we are proposing on Los Gatos Boulevard, the grid pattern has already begun, and we need to fit into that from an infrastructure run perspective.
I could just follow up quickly. So the buildings you're referring to, those are the ones that are placed and accessed along the Boulevard, correct?
Yes, sir.
They're not, there's no internal streets that address those?
Well, the streets that access those, and entrances that access those buildings, all lead into the interior of the site, and they have parking on the interior.
Right. But the accesses from Los, there's no other street through the North Forty that's accessing them, correct?
No.
And the opportunity for diagonal that you were referring to, that's in the Phase Two application, or possible Phase Two application?
Well, there could be multiple phases to the North Forty, because as we know, and we've stated multiple times, there's 14 property owners on the North Forty. So the fact that we have two phases to our transaction with the Yuki family does not necessarily mean that's the only phase coming forward. Our planning, because we are forward-thinking and intend to make this portion of the property fit in to the rest of the North Forty, which is why you have a specific plan, so that as pieces develop individually, they do so in a cohesive manner, our plan is to kind of continue on there, using that diagonal street.
I appreciate that, but I think that, my understanding is that this Phase One application, I think it's what it's called, has to stand on its own relative to objective standards that are in the specific plan.
And we meet and exceed all of those specific development standards, without question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
Questions for Ms. Kripke-Meyer. Prior to February 2nd, 2016, I think the town consulting architect wrote a letter of his concerns about the project. And there was a good response written on February 2nd, 2016. It's not signed, so I don't know who wrote it. But then he writes back, and they write back, and he writes back, and there was a response
Yes, she's present tonight. She's my colleague, yes.
And she's with BAR, and you're with BAR. So I can assume the February 2nd letter was written by her?
It's written by the team, yes. We collaborated, and this whole development is a team effort, so, yes.
So I'll put the team on here, to see where it came from.
Can you confirm which exhibit you're referring to?
Exhibit eight, I'm sorry.
Exhibit eight for the commissioners to refer to?
In her response to Cannon's initial letters, she details what kind of tenant design or modifications may be made by a tenant. And it occurred to me, I wondered, do you have an approximation of how many commercial tenants would be in and around the marketplace?
It's a great question, exciting question, actually. And so the marketplace is intended to be one single entity, which is what was discussed in the specific plan. How we populate the space and program the space, we're still working on, frankly. The direction we are going on is very exciting, however, if you think of, you know, your typical grocery store departments, and so think of produce, think of protein, which could be beef, chicken, fish, think of a bakery, you know, some sundries, and think of kind of the best that the local, the best of the local market and the local growers kind of populating each one of those departments. So right now, it could be between four, five, six types of tenants within Market Hall. At one point, and we've done quite a bit of research on these markets, at one point, we thought they could be small, little kiosks with 100 square feet each, and there's examples of that throughout the country that we've looked at. But we are gravitating towards more of a grocery store department, it's not quite a grocery store, but especially a market that has individual vendors that celebrate the local growers and celebrating the food locally. But that's still a working model. We are working very hard with partners who we've identified previously on that, but that's kind of where we're at, and we're excited by it.
So the commercial square footage that's been assigned to Phase One would contain possibly four, possibly six tenants?
Oh, no. So that was just for Market Hall. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Total number.
Yeah. And I'm happy to walk through the retail program.
Rough total number.
So there's, I have to go through each building. So the building on the immediate north, as you enter, is intended to be a restaurant, standalone restaurant. That's Building B2.
Right.
Building A2 is intended to be a standalone retail building. Again, these are all preliminary points. And then you have Market Hall, which is B2, which I just spoke about. Building C can be demised as a standalone restaurant of about, say, 5,000 square feet, with an additional 2,000 square feet of retail. And then Building A1 is all neighborhood-serving, kind of small shop space that you would find, typical neighborhood uses. Maybe there's some hair salon, maybe there's other uses that you would find kind of in a neighborhood setting.
Would you be the leasing agent, or have supervisory effect over the leasing agent?
Yeah, so Grosvenor typically hires local, you know, kind of the leasing folks who have the best connections in the local market. So Grosvenor does not manage and lease directly. We hire third-party, generally.
In the many, many, many meetings that have preceded this one, has there been any discussion of a fair consideration for non-compete with the downtown?
Yes. It has been discussed many, many, many times.
You agreed to that?
A short answer, and I do have, let me have some notes here, so I get it right. So the question is about tenants downtown. And this issue was debated for years, frankly. And at the specific plan advisory committee process, as well as Town Council deliberations, we all remember them. They tended to be the most, you know, some of the most interesting conversations that we had. And after all those deliberations, it is not a requirement under the current specific plan. So the answer, in short, is no. You've got numerous economic studies. You had one in 2011 commissioned by the Town of Los Gatos that showed $80 million leaking out of the Town of Los Gatos every year. You had a second one, which is the Urban Decay Study in the EIR. You had a third one to support the specific plan last year by San Jose State. All of them indicated that there's significant unmet demand for comparison shopping in food and beverage, and so this shouldn't be an issue. Finally, that condition could potentially result...
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? What does comparative shopping mean?
So...
Competitive shopping?
No, comparative shopping. So it could be soft goods, clothing, things like that. You know, and so that, the final point is probably maybe the strongest point. It could potentially hurt the viability of both a downtown establishment, as well as the retail program on the North Forty. And I'm starting with the assumption that we want both to succeed. For example, this could cause a situation where downtown business, who's not able to renegotiate a lease downtown, is forced out of Los Gatos to seek a premises outside to continue its operations. There are numerous examples of downtown also, downtown establishment seeking or seeing this unmet demand in the trade area, which we can talk about. So examples of downtown establishment wanting a second or third store or restaurant, or wanting to try a new concept and staying within the trade area. If you had a prohibition of them going to the North Forty, they would do what they're doing now, frankly, which is ending up in Campbell or Willow Glen or someplace like that. You have multiple restaurants, this is the easiest example, that have both a presence within downtown Los Gatos, as well as within the exact trade area that the North Forty would be serving. And they see this unmet demand, which, and there's, we can go through the numbers, Tim Kelly from Kaiser Marston's here to present the economic numbers. But this was discussed at infinitum, and that is why it's not, you know, I think it would end up potentially hurting both downtown operators, as well as potentially the North Forty.
What would?
Makeing requirements restricting tenancies on the North Forty from anyone downtown.
Some kind of a non-competitive clause would hurt both?
Could potentially hurt both.
We've heard of, may I?
Yes, you may.
We've heard a number of speakers, town merchants, longtime, well-established, kind of know their business. And, you know, I find that more persuasive than, maybe that's foolish of me, but I find that more persuasive of studies that say, gee, it may not be a problem if the proprietor is telling us, gee, I may go out of business. So that's the kind of thing I'm concerned with on non-compete. Lot of analogies in the, what is it now, 610 letters we've read, talking about comparisons to downtown San Jose, Saratoga. And that gets my attention. I don't have the depth and the advisors and the et ceteras that you do, but I need some reassurance that there is an awareness of what the downtown merchants are saying and some kind of concern for them, or...
Absolutely.
Or I will so advise Town Council that this needs to be worked on.
Absolutely. The first study in 2011 identified synergistic solutions, and this wasn't our study. This was town, this was a study commissioned by Town of Los Gatos, by Economic Vitality Department. It showed synergistic opportunities where the North Forty and downtown, and don't forget about the Boulevard, and wineries, all of them could actually complement each other. And I thought those were very good suggestions in terms of how that can happen. Co-branding, co-marketing was an example, working with, which we already have a transportation kind of demand management responsibility with the North Forty, coordination with VTA on getting shuttles, kind of back and forth. You know, we talked about marketing, and, you know, I know we've heard from, and this is a discussion we've had, frankly, Commissioner, for eight years, and again, none of those policies that you talk about ended up in the specific plan, and it's a direct result of the conversations and all the studies that we've had. But there are things that we can do together, and there are other businesses downtown who don't share the opinion that others share.
Yes.
There's opportunities for folks to, for example, to pop, to do, you know, in Market Hall, for example. My one example that I always give is if someone makes pizza downtown, and they want to sell pizza sauce in Market Hall, and say, if you want us to make it, the full thing for you, come downtown, that's a great example of synergistic kind of opportunities. You know, we think, and because there's such strong demand, and I think it warrants going through the economic analysis here, strong demand in the marketplace, that if you don't capture it on the North Forty, it is just going to go across the border to Campbell and South San Jose. And so working together, we can increase the pie for Los Gatos instead of looking at who's competing against whom within the town boundaries. And again, that was the conclusion of every report. We looked for, report after report after report was commissioned to evaluate this particular issue. And the last one was probably the best one, because it did look specifically about competitive advantages... about competitive advantages between downtown and the North Forty, and the conclusion was there should be no impact to downtown.
Well, life is a bell curve, and there may be those merchants who profit from the increased residency on the North Forty. And at the other end of the curve, and in the middle, is going to be merchants who want to be in both places, because they see that, but at the other end, it's going to be the merchant who fears for their livelihood and their business. And all I'm asking is that, keep in mind, have a medium, some forum, where those concerns could be expressed to you, and you would have that sensitivity on the tenants to whom you leased.
We welcome that conversation. We, I live downtown, I, we are here because of what downtown means, and so, we are ultra-sensitive to this issue. I think you'll find a lot of businesses, and I've been accused of trying to lure them to the North Forty, but it's just conversations. We understand, and we have talked to businesses and restaurants downtown for, all over, throughout the years. We've participated and had conversations continuously, had a joint session with your Chamber of Commerce, and I'm not saying they're endorsing the North Forty, but we have participated in the business community for years. We understand that, we are sensitive to that, we would welcome that conversation, and to be a part of that conversation in terms of how, you know, we can work together. Ultimately, this phase of development is only 66,000 square feet, however, and it is neighborhood-serving. It is intended to be for folks on the north end of town, and service the new residents on the North Forty, and the neighborhoods that are around.
Mr. Cabobres, I'm going to stop you right there.
Okay.
I do believe that the question was answered, and what I do hear you say, that there is an awareness, but not a guarantee. And at the same time that Vice Chair Kane had his hand up, Commissioner Hanson had her hand up, and I know Commissioner Hudes is waiting to speak. So, Commissioner Hanson, did you still want to ask your question?
Yes, I had a, I had sort of the, it's not really the opposite view. One thing that struck me in looking at this Phase One application, in looking at the specific plan, there's a lot of references in the specific plan, all three districts need to work together so that it can be self-sufficient, and this gets to not having everything be adding traffic to the Boulevard and stuff, so, there's many things that can be taken care of inside of the North Forty. And with the limited amount of commercial in Phase One, I worry about how much of that can possibly be achieved, and then, you know, then leading to the whole traffic thing. So, I was kind of hoping to understand, like, what, you mentioned a little bit in Building A1, there would be some personal service ones, but I know, I heard a comment about, like, putting Patagonia in one of the buildings, and I didn't, that didn't seem like something that was going to help the problem I'm talking about, because, you know, permitted uses in the plan include, like, banks, and, you know, hairdressers, and whatnot.
Yeah, and at this stage of the game, we don't have, we don't typically have tenants. It's really hard to lease up space without being able to kick the tires, but we have obviously an anchor. Typically, I would have a named anchor right now, but this time, we're trying to do something special. We're trying to deliver to the town this specialty market that we've called Market Hall. We don't have to, specific plan doesn't require us to do that. But we, we've, you know, we have said it over the years, we think it's a good idea, we think you have all of the grocery stores already represented on the Boulevard, but you do need to service the residents of the North Forty through some type of food, and that's, so, Market Hall is being designed, as we speak, for folks who can go there for four, five times a week to pick something up, and we're looking at convenience of trying to get in and out of that. So, I assure you, that's first and foremost on our mind, is servicing folks who, you know, are going to be there frequently. It's not a regional destination of any sort. 66,000 square feet is about the size, and maybe a little bit larger than some of your other, you know, the Trader Joe's that Grosvenor used to own, Los Gatos Village Square, the Whole Foods Center, it's in that scale. And so, you should be able to provide those neighborhood services that we want people to walk to, instead of having to drive to. That's our goal, it's kind of what drives us in terms of our vision for the property. And so, I'm, just by the size of it, by nature of it, it is neighborhood-serving, and we will, we are programming it as such. It is not being programmed to be a tourist attraction, or anything like that, from a regional perspective.
Okay. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. And this is, you know, an area of concern for me for a long time, and I concur with many of Commissioner Kane's concerns that he raised, and listened carefully to a number of the business folks in town. I'm glad to see that there's a report in here, and I have to apologize to my fellow commissioners, but I would like to actually ask some questions about this report, because this is the first time that it's been seen in a public setting. And I think it's important, because I also think that this is the type of thing that was envisioned for this ongoing, even when more retail comes in, so-
Commissioner Hudes-
I'm talking about the Kaiser Marston Associates-
And the exhibit number is?
It is Exhibit Nine.
Okay, Exhibit Nine, Commissioners, thank you.
From the March 30th-
Okay.
-packet. I try to keep it to just a few questions, the, because I think this is very, very important, and I'm glad to see the work done. The first question is, how is it possible to do this analysis without having a floor plan of the retail space, and knowing what size there is within a building? Because I don't believe there is a floor plan within each of the, each of the retail spaces.
Good evening, my name is Tim Kelly, I'm with Kaiser Marston Associates, we prepared the report. That's a fair question, and if you look at the report, it's generic, the types of tenants, they're broken up into three basic categories, which were the assumptions behind it, which was the food hall for 20,000 square feet, the food and beverage, which is essentially restaurants for 20,000 square feet, and specialty retail, which also includes service, like personal services, banks, things like that, for 26,000 square feet. There is no information beyond that, and that was evaluated in the context of, how would it affect the downtown? Would it have a negative effect on the downtown? And maybe I could stop there, if I can keep, you want me to keep going?
Sure. Because I have questions about the next step.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the estimate on the impact of downtown and other areas, did it look at both potential declines in those areas as a result of having the retail here, as well as the possible synergies or increases?
Those are all really good questions. When we wrote the scope up, what we were asked to do was just evaluate whether Phase One, which is 66,000 square feet, not the 400,000 square feet that's in the number thrown around for the overall, but just the 66, would that have a negative impact on the core area of the downtown, the Santa Cruz Avenue portion of the downtown? So, we did not look at the other areas, we weren't asked to look at the other areas, and so, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it was just related to a core-
It answers my question, and it raises a question for staff.
Okay, fair enough.
The other question, and it looks to me like your conclusion, is that it will not negatively impact downtown.
That's correct.
And how certain are you of that, and how would you measure that going forward?
Okay, well, I feel highly confident it won't have a negative impact on the downtown. Let me just explain the context of, so, what we asked from the city staff for some of this information was confidential, so it had to be put into a bulk set of numbers, so we couldn't look at individual businesses, as you might have mentioned. So, we asked city staff for the square footage in downtown, the number of businesses in the downtown, and the actual taxable sales in downtown, and by different categories. So, one category is what's referred to as soft goods comparison, it has the, it's the sort of the specialty group, and the other group is food and beverage, which is the restaurants, and then a third group, which is very limited, is convenience. Okay, so, within downtown, there's approximately 500 square feet of space, of which, I think 300,000, 350,000 is in service and comparison goods, there's a lot of space, 172 businesses. Food and beverage, there's 62 businesses, and approximately 160,000 square feet, so that, the 350 and 160 get you, the downtown has half a million square feet, and the sales, annual taxable sales, I guess would be now 2014 or so, were approximately 170, almost 175 million dollars. So, downtown is a very strong economic unit, it has been for a long time. It's obviously a model in the Bay Area of what other cities would like to have, they're very much would love to have your downtown. It has survived the expansion of Valley Fair, it's survived Santana Row, it's survived the expansion. It's a very successful, healthy downtown. Does that mean nothing should be done? Does that mean you can rest on your laurels? No. Obviously, markets are dynamic, you always have to reevaluate. But in the context of the North Forty, the North Forty, if you take 20,000 square feet that's in a food hall, there's no food hall downtown. So, there's no impact there. If you take the food, the food and beverage, you're talking about 20,000 square feet, food and beverage right now, and the whole southern Santa Clara County, is a very big growing market, restaurants are popping up everywhere. As the applicant has mentioned, you know, restaurants are opening multiple restaurants, you know, it's a very high-growth area. So, and the downtown has almost 80 million. We think just the population growth, and what's going on in the market, I think, rest food and beverage, as a whole, will not have an impact on downtown. And then finally, the last category, which is the 26,000 square feet, which can be service, it can be dentists, it can be medical, it can be financial, it can be exercise studio, but it's 26,000 square feet, if you took an average of 2,600 square feet a tenant, which is not very big, that's 10 tenants. It's hard to, hard to say 10 tenants would-
Sure.
-negative impact on downtown.
No, I understand.
Okay.
One of the concerns was, and I didn't see much about it in your report, was the fact that there are certain constraints and restrictions in the downtown, which there would not be in the North Forty, such as conditional use permit, or difficulty parking. Are those things that you thought about or considered when you were making this recommendation? I was, actually, what I was speaking about is the case of a restaurant that has to comply with a conditional use permit downtown, but, you know, there's no need for that in North Forty, so, okay. I would suggest if you do this in the future, that perhaps consider looking at some of the requirements that are elsewhere as well, because I think they do, you know, have an impact. So, my last question is really, is this, is this report and methodology repeatable? In your opinion, could you take what you've done here, and for instance, look at the impact of Phase One at a later time using this methodology, or could it be applied to Phase Two, or something else?
It's a yes with an asterisk, because, as you know, there, you know, there are multiple variables that affect a lot of things that go on, just like you were mentioning code for parking requirements, there are lots of variables that are out there, but it certainly could be used as one of the tools, for sure, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, any further questions on the economic report? See none, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, I believe we have further questions for the applicant. Commissioner Hanson, if Ms. Baker and Mr. Cabobres can step back up to the podium, thank you.
I had some questions about the housing, again. I know we talked about the millennials and seniors yesterday, but I wanted to just talk about, one of the community members brought this up yesterday. I do recognize that in the specific plan, it's not required to use all the housing types, but I, just for the sake of asking the question, because it would be less intense, why there were no cottage cluster units included in the proposal?
Sure. I think that you have in your exhibit, but I'll put it up for the public to be able to reference as well. We asked our architect to take all of the standards within the specific plan, such as setbacks, open space requirements, parking requirements, and so forth, as well as overlaying this with the cottage cluster requirements, which are drawn actually from a different document, which is, wasn't your Affordable Housing Overlay Zone document that originally contemplated the cottage cluster unit, at about 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, where, again, some of those regulations are the first floor, the second floor can't be more than 50% of the first floor space. We did a density study to establish what the density would be, and it was about 12 to 13 units per acre, at the most aggressive, most perfect square that we could find, or in this case, a rectangle, so that we could get, sort of maximize those units. So, with that, it's not a, it brings down the density substantially, and it's not a product that ultimately is compatible if you're being told to develop at 20 units per acre.
I'm sure it was in one of the tables that we saw, but that brought up a question that I did have, which is, of all the acreage where there is residential, are all of those producing 20 units per acre?
Yeah, I think that this exhibit that staff has up here reflects what you all, and this was worked, we worked with staff and HCD, I believe they worked with, through their experience with HCD, on how we could go to HCD with a straight face, and say, we are delivering 20 units per acre. Some things you can remove, some areas you can remove, such as the main corridors, for example, streets. And so, that exhibit is what is reflective of how you get to 20 units per acre, both in each zones, you have to look at it as, in zones, you are getting there, and then overall, you are getting there. And in this instance, I believe there are four zones, and then a comprehensive density as well, and in each of the zones, you have to meet it as well as comprehensively. So, removing, again, this is a delicate balance, where if you move to this type of product, perhaps in that area, those units may not be able to be counted towards your housing element.
Okay. And then, on the other side of that, there also is no, there's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, there's no studios, and in the specific plan, under the Gen Y discussion, for better or worse, you can argue that that might not be right, but it's in the specific plan, it says that the millennials want studios, and some, and often no bedrooms and loft units, and there's, you know, a couple of loft kind of work units, but there's no studio, even those aren't studios. So, I wonder about that, because that would be another way to bring down some of the intensity, and also make things more affordable.
Sure. And we do understand that, now, this is a for-sale product, and the specific plan was not looking at for-sale or for-rent, we do have the for-rent affordable units, but studio units, and I did talk about the focus groups we went to, folks in a suburban context are looking for more space, and rather than being in a studio unit, and the other complexity with studio units can be, for sale, there are, I've never built a for-sale studio unit in a, particularly in a suburban context, I mean, that is extraordinarily rare. And then, usually, when you can support these sorts of housing types, like micro-units, you end up with, with a lot of transit opportunities with, it's in an urban context, this is not an urban context, and so, we do have to look at balancing the market demands with the specific plan, and nowhere in the specific plan was there a studio requirement. So, we did go as low as we felt we could market and sell a unit, which is far below a typical for-sale condominium product, which was about 900 square feet, and it does, and we also have the 550-square-foot senior unit to give a wide range.
Well, okay, so, that brought me to my, another question I wanted to ask, which is, and I kind of knew the answer was, they're all for sale, but why are, why are all the units for sale, except for the senior affordable, which is being done by a separate group in housing, versus a mix of that? I mean, I just-
That's a really interesting question, and it's going to be a little bit subjective in my answer, which is, we did, Summer Hill, we're very fortunate, we build everything from for-rent to estate homes. So, we build apartments in San Francisco, and we build estate homes right here in Los Gatos. So, we have a wide portfolio to be able to draw from experience. So we have a wide portfolio to be able to draw from experience. And ultimately, when we were looking at unmet needs and what that was, there are apartments that are available for rent in Los Gatos. It is very rare to find a 900-square-foot for-sale product, however. So when we're looking at that, and for someone that wants to enter into the marketplace and not rent, and wants to buy, what could they buy in that type of zone? And those products are extremely limited, not only here in Los Gatos, but in the Bay Area as a whole. Generally, you are either for-rent in this type of square footage that we're talking about, or you hop up to a higher bedroom count and higher square footage. So in looking at this, this, to us, when we were trying to establish all the different ways that we could land, plan, and design, and offer products that were meeting unmet needs, we found that the for-sale millennial product is absolutely an unmet need. There are Aventino apartments, there are other examples of apartments in Los Gatos.
All right. I have a question for you, Ms. Baker. So which city did you resource your focus groups in?
Sure. Well, I mentioned we had focus groups right at Netflix, and those workers came from all over. And also, we had a blend of, I don't actually know where everyone resided from in the first focus group, but it was about 20 individuals, and we actually held it in the East Bay.
Okay, that's helpful, but 20...
Which we are drawing, we are drawing from a variety of places where people might live right now and commute into Los Gatos, but really want to live in Los Gatos.
Okay. So I heard you say 20 people in one group. How many individuals were surveyed in totality of the focus groups?
And this was not, as far as a survey, this was a very large and expansive and extended dialogue. So I don't want to exclusively look at it as a survey, where we just pushed out a bunch of paper to folks. This was a dialogue of, what are you looking for? What are your needs? What kind of housing types? Where do you live right now? And just, it was a conversation, and our architects were there, and they took all the notes. And then, again, we designed product after that point, we designed our units. And then we decided, ultimately, it's funny, since this process started, Netflix was approved, it's built, and the expansion, and we went into Netflix, because that is where we do see a lot of the millennials that could want to live here and are tired of that commute back and forth.
Thank you. Further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hudes.
Were you going to add something to that?
I would just say, on the multifamily and the rental question, your general plan allows for 750 residential units. When we started the process on the specific plan, the draft specific plan considered heights in the 55-foot range. And so our original view, Commissioner Hanson, was to provide more of a mix of tenure, for-sale and for-rent. And as I think some I saw exhibit yesterday, a lot of the rental homes that you have in Los Gatos are at a density well in excess of 20 units per acre. 750 residential units kind of fit our program a little bit better, and we did, we had planned quite a bit of rental at that time. In 2012, when town council called a timeout, essentially, and set the vision statement and the guiding principles, which have become our filter for everything, the number of units that was contemplated on the North Forty decreased, and all of a sudden, we ended up with lower heights. And that's frankly, when we brought Summer Hill on board to produce or to help us design the homes that we have now, which is lower intensity than had originally been contemplated, which would have had a better mix of tenure.
Well, I mean, one of the residents did a nice analysis yesterday. I mean, if you took even portions of the property and built, say, an apartment building full of studios, 500 to 1,000 square feet, you could overdo the density there, and you could have less density somewhere else on the property. I mean, there's other ways to look at it.
You can do 1,000 land plans, you can have, you know, 10 different people come in with 10 different applications. Again, we're looking at running this through setbacks, open space, what the market demand is, what the type of aesthetics we're trying to draw. We have the certain, as we've been referring to, these objective criteria, but then we're also trying to continue with some of these other more subjective criteria, so that we can achieve a balance. And that sort of concept is, you can't fault it, and I can't necessarily say that they're incorrect, but ultimately, we have to sell these units. Building all 1,000-square-foot units is neither a requirement, nor is it, can we find any example of, you must stay within these exact lanes with respect to bedroom count, unit sizes, and so forth. And so we drew upon our experience with our conversations to address what we felt were both the target audience, while satisfying the specific plan requirements.
Yeah, sure.
I would like to add to the answer to that question about a hypothetical apartment building. For one thing, the one apartment building that we do have seems to be the most controversial element within the plan. And going back to the look and feel of Los Gatos, the Lark District has much smaller scale development than the Transition District. The Transition District has much smaller scale development than places like Santana Row or other developments that the North Forty has been compared to. That said, if we keep, if we were to build, for example, a 25-unit building instead of a 50-unit building with units that were twice the size, about 1,000 square feet on average, which would be typical for the South Bay, we would have a building of the same scale as the affordable housing, and we would have a parking garage that would be much larger, because it would have to be parked at 1.5 per dwelling unit rather than 0.5 per dwelling unit. So you would start to get a big garage and a much more massive building. We had many alternates like that, over the course of the years, where we fit parking in, in ways which we don't think, based on the look and feel that we're trying to do in Los Gatos, would be accepted today. And so as we have the Lark District full of a lot of very small, relatively small buildings and blocks, this, to us, was a lot more along the lines of the look and feel of Los Gatos.
Just, thank you for that. And I understand what you're saying. You made a comment that the Lark District is less intense than the Transition District, but I'm not sure what measure you're using for that, because there's lots of row homes, and, I mean, I see the same housing types and clusters in both the Lark and the Transition, and of course, there's quite a few more units. Could you help me understand how...
Yes, I was referring to the scale. Behind the commissioners here, there is kind of a figure ground plan with yellow shown on the buildings, and the scale of those footprints is quite varied within the Summer Hill home project area, and certainly much smaller than any 20-unit or 25-unit apartment building would be, given that that unit would also have, that larger building would have to accommodate 30 cars. The other advantage of this plan is that every building in those units self-parks. And so we don't end up with any large garages or anything like that. And if I can kind of come back to the parking thing very briefly, the only place where we have the super-low parking ratio, which is 0.5 per dwelling unit, is in the senior housing that's combined with the market hall. The tandem parking that was discussed yesterday is only used where a couple, two residents would be in the same unit. So just wanted to clarify that confusion as well.
Right. Commissioner Hudes.
So I wanted to get back to the question I was going to ask about traffic. I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion when we begin deliberations on traffic. So I just wanted to get maybe one more perspective on the 13%, 26% claim or position. And also, I had a question about considering actual traffic loads. Let's get that one first.
Sure. So I did want to add on one little thing. One other thing about the Lark District versus the Transition District is that there are, we have two-story homes in the Lark District, and in the Transition District, it actually is three stories, three-story homes. So there is a difference in step-up.
Yeah. Well, other than in the perimeter overlay, you know, within the setback from Lark Avenue, if you move away from that, those units, it's basically the same.
There are two units, two-story units that also front the community park. We did that intentionally, so that it was lower scale into the park, and you don't have that example in the Transition District.
Okay.
Thanks.
So my question was on traffic?
Yes. So the 13% and 26%.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, yes, we have our traffic engineer here, who she also has provided the information to the town. That is specific, the 26% is specific, as I mentioned, to the Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard intersection. And part of the, so 13% of increase in traffic can cause a more substantial delay, obviously, than 26, than just the 13%, because you're putting more cars in an already constrained environment, and Katie can speak about this. So this was specific to the Phase One build-out, and the traffic that the Phase One application will create, that 26% reduction will happen, even with the Phase One inclusion. So...
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Katie Cole, and with Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants. Our office is at 160 West Santa Clara Street in downtown San Jose. I prepared the traffic analysis for the EIR, and then subsequent analysis for the Phase One project. And I think that this question is best answered by kind of stepping back and telling you a little bit about traffic analysis, so that we can talk about where those two numbers come from. So when we're doing a traffic analysis, the town and other jurisdictions like Caltrans and VTA have standards for what we look at. And so we typically evaluate either level of service or quality of service for transportation facilities. For intersections specifically, we look at peak hour. So we look at the AM commute time, the PM commute time. That typically corresponds to 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. And so what we do is, we take traffic counts at locations that could be affected, and we evaluate how they're operating today. And we do that by using average delay. So we look at the intersection, and we look at how much vehicle traffic is there, we count bikes, we count pedestrians. We've got some computer models that help us evaluate average delay at those intersections. So it looks at every single movement and approach, and it figures out, if you were to approach that intersection, how long, on average, would you be stuck there? So when we did the traffic analysis for the EIR, we looked at the full build-out of the project, and we did counts in 20, the very end of 2012 and 2013, at numerous intersections around Los Gatos and Campbell and San Jose, to evaluate how they were operating at that timeframe. And then we also then added in all of the traffic that would be caused by projects that were either under construction or already approved. So for example, the Albright project was included in that. And so that's called the background traffic. So it's existing traffic plus traffic from all of these other things that are happening, and that gives us the background traffic. So when we were asked to do some subsequent analysis for the Phase One project, we were asked, okay, what happens now that we are adding in Phase One on top of the background traffic? So 2013 traffic plus, we added about 16 developments that were kind of in process under construction or approved, plus Phase One. And then the other thing we added was all of the improvements that were part of the Phase One project. So, for example, at Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark, there are additional lane configurations, so an additional northbound left-turn lane, an additional eastbound left-turn lane, so from Lark onto Los Gatos Boulevard. There's also a variety of pedestrian improvements, crosswalk changes, things like that. At the intersection of SR17 northbound and Lark, there is an additional right-turn lane to get onto the freeway. So we added all of that into our traffic analysis. And so where those percentages come from is when you look at just background traffic analysis with no lane configuration improvements at those intersections, you get a certain average delay. Then when you add in the North Forty Phase One project, and those traffic improvements, what ends up happening is you actually decrease delay a little bit, because now you've added additional lanes, you've added additional capacity. So that's where those numbers come from. And we did it at two intersections. We looked at Los Gatos Boulevard, and, for Phase One, anyway, we looked specifically kind of more contained and adjacent to the site, because we already looked at build-out for, you know, 20-plus intersections. So we were trying to really understand the localized impacts of Phase One and make sure that it is conforming with the EIR. And so that's where those numbers came from. So if you compare background to background plus Phase One, plus the transportation improvements, you end up with a 36% reduction in delay in the morning. So you go from 51 seconds of average delay down to 32.7 seconds of average delay, and that change is 36%.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, because I think we're probably going to get into some detail on that later.
Okay.
I did want to hear it, because this is, you know, what I saw here. The second question I had was about what's included in the traffic in the TIA. And, you know, I looked at the FAC 9 in the staff report that lists six future, I guess significant pending development projects. When I look at that list, five of those six are complete now. And they're all occupied, and I believe one of them is only 50% occupied. To what extent did you rely on projections on those five versus taking counts after those five were in place?
So we have, the last time we took counts was in, we took counts in January and February of 2013. So we have not taken additional traffic counts since then.
Do you believe that we should take another look at those counts, given that those are before those projects, or some of those projects were completed?
Yeah, you know, and, so it's always, it's always fine to take additional traffic counts. That's fine. I think you would get some information from that. However, when we did the background analysis for the EIR, we added in 16 approved and pending developments at their full build-out on top of those existing counts. So we have, you know, in essence, accounted for what those projects would be like at their full occupancy. And so I feel confident that we have accounted for kind of those other things that are happening in the town, and also in adjacent towns.
So, which raises two other things. One is, did you in any way analyze the impact of the Waze, Apple, Google situation and the beach traffic?
Where, you mean like where it's routing people?
Yeah, and the impact that it's having, the actual impact in town.
We didn't look specifically, although I do understand that particularly on weekends and on, you know, during holiday time periods, there is diversion from the freeway onto Los Gatos Boulevard. We specifically analyzed, per, you know, state of the practice and what's required by standards, the, you know, commute periods, which you don't tend to get as much of that diversion happening.
Okay. And the last one was something you mentioned a little bit, and that's holiday traffic. I'm sure that holiday traffic would be a much bigger issue for Phase Two, but even Phase One, do you anticipate traffic entering and leaving at a much higher rate around the holidays?
The project site, or just Los Gatos in general?
No, the project site and the adjacent Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark Avenue.
You know, I think you'll continue to have what you have now, which is around holiday time. You get busy traffic conditions on the weekends. It's pretty common in Silicon Valley. We don't typically analyze it for that condition, because then you're building roads for your kind of worst-case scenario. We can't maintain, and we can't build capacity to cover kind of the worst-case scenarios that you have. It's just not a good use of funding, and it makes your roads really, really big, and there's trade-offs to that, because the minute you start to expand roads, you've now made it less desirable for bicycling, you've made crossing distances much longer for pedestrians, and so there's a balance when you're adding capacity to roadways.
So is anything in Phase One in any way analogous to the traffic at, let's say, Valley Fair at the holiday season?
Not, I mean, no. And we did not analyze it that way. It's a, you know, small, mostly neighborhood-serving commercial type of a use, so...
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
Commissioner Erickson?
So since we have you, can you help me think through an issue? So, there's an additional left-turn lane heading east on Lark, at the left, that would turn left, going north.
Onto Los Gatos Boulevard.
Onto Los Gatos Boulevard. Which, your analysis, and I would respect the analysis, and assume that it does, would reduce the wait time. Now, if I understood you correctly, and I, in my own review of the traffic analysis earlier, there's no additional capacity added going north on Los Gatos Boulevard between Lark and, and, however you want to look at it, Good Samaritan and Burton.
Good Samaritan.
You know, depending on how you want to look, which side you want to call.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, despite the fact that there's a long-term build-out plan to expand Los Gatos Boulevard, in the plans of the town, we don't own all the right-of-way and that kind of stuff at this point in time. Can you help me understand while, what the impact will be, or the effect will be, of adding that additional turn lane onto Los Gatos Boulevard headed north, when you're allowing, when you're providing the opportunity for a greater number of cars to pass through, and not adding any capacity to accommodate them in the stretch between Lark and Good Samaritan? And is that, so help me understand how to think about that.
Yeah, you can break it down a little bit. So, just the physical design, so clearly when you have a three, so you would have three left-turn lanes going from Lark onto northbound Los Gatos Boulevard, you have to have receiving lanes to accept those cars. You can't just, you have to have a lane for every lane that turns, turns left, you have to have a lane for those cars to enter. And so what the physical design looks like now, and can be easily accommodated within the existing space that is available on Los Gatos Boulevard, is kind of, is a merge lane. So the, so one of the lanes, one of those three lanes that are turning left, will merge back, and then you would continue to have the two northbound lanes on Los Gatos Boulevard. The reason that that works is because as you process traffic through a signal, let's say that the left turn gets 30 seconds of green time. So, and you process as many cars as you can, turning left in, say, 30 seconds, right? Then the light turns red, stops those left turns, they have a chance to merge in, spread out, and continue their, on their way through the thing, through the street.
Does that answer your question? Commissioner Hudes, did you have further comment? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Erickson?
So where you have major, where you get bottlenecks from merges, is when you have a continual flow of traffic that never gets paused. So in a traffic signal situation, you're cycling through all of the movements at the traffic signal, and so you're getting little breaks after you've processed big platoons of traffic. You get a little break after every time the light turns red, allows cars to continue on and merge. We've got a lot of examples of this situation. You know, could be at ramps, it could be at intersections in the middle of town, in the middle of cities.
So, and you, I don't want to get off on this too much, but, and I don't want to pretend to be a traffic engineer, because I'm not. So, you would control, so the other complication that would occur would be the northbound traffic, the light will change and flow of northbound traffic will go north, then, then, but you're going to control that by the way you control the lights?
Right.
Because you wouldn't allow that to happen, you would let the turn, okay, I got it.
Yeah. And I think another good point is...
That's fine, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have traffic engineers for the town, that I can...
Sure. I also just want to mention that the improvements that are being constructed at this intersection are not to accommodate North, Phase One of the North 40 project. These are improvements that, you know, were part of the town's CIP, and are being constructed as, you know, part of a, you know, just improvement plan to help traffic flow in general in that area. So we looked at, you know, what would be necessary for just Phase One of the project, and you would not necessarily to conform to the standards that the town has, we would not need to construct those improvements.
Right. Vice Chair Kane?
Along those lines, I think, of the extent to which the off-site improvements are being provided, and this may not be a question for you, and I may follow up with staff later, but in the original, or as called the original, in the March 30 staff report, there's 10, 12, 14 bullets on projects that are going to happen to mitigate new traffic, and as you just pointed out, existing traffic. And I was wondering how exactly that works. Ms. Baker, you had a slide up yesterday that showed, what, $10.5 million being earmarked for these projects, the off-site improvements? That didn't include the onsite improvements, this was...
This is exclusively off-site. So, off-site, there's about $1 million worth of traffic mitigations that would be required per the EIR. However, the town has identified certain area, we are out there digging up utilities, putting in new pipes, it's the right time to go out and do the capital improvements that the town has as far as their, their long-term vision, as well as have integrated as a community benefit for the specific plan.
So I misunderstood, that $10.25 is not for these off-site improvements?
That is for the off-site. The onsite improvements are exclusive, are exclusive from this number. This number is only with relation to Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard improvements.
Just a sec. It doesn't have, it doesn't exist, it's item number two, and it's the staff report from March 30. And it's very ambitious, it's the clearest one I've seen on how much work is going to be done to help us out. And you're saying that's what the $10.25 is for?
That is correct.
Okay. So, how does that work? I start building this, and you write checks to the Department of Parks and Public Works, or they bill you, or?
Typically, it would be much more efficient for a developer, because we're already out there doing, again, the pipes and so forth, to also do the work here. And, there would, we would obviously also bond for this, so that if the developer did not, something happened, did not finish, that the town could finish it.
So these funds are dedicated, specifically marked for these 15 or so projects?
That is correct.
What if there was an overrun? What if the $10.25 wasn't enough? What have we done to ourselves?
Then, then we'll be paying for the increase. This is, this is on us. So we will be paying for the increase. If it's, costs go up, right? So, costs of concrete go up, costs of asphalt goes up, costs of everything goes up, construction, cost of labor. And so, if costs have gone up, and now this becomes $11 million, then we've now, additional, then we've now completed $11 million worth.
So you have a commitment with the town, we're estimating $10.25, but if it goes over, all of these improvement, improvements being put in, to a large part for this project, if it goes over, you'll, you'll cover the overage, not the town?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Hudes?
I had one more area I wanted to get into before we go into, from my perspective, and that's open space. And I had a few questions about open space. And the, the, is it, you know, is it correct that the park is less than half an acre, and the orchard is about less than half an acre? And, related to that, and that the rest of the open space is spread across the site? And, and the question is, why not consider concentrating more open space in larger areas as compared to having it spread as much across the site?
Sure. So, the, the community park, the community park, do you have the slide from our slideshow that shows the breakdown? Maybe that would be more helpful than this, I think. So the community park, which includes the 39 garden plots, and, and there's orchards throughout the entire specific plan, so it, this application, and it's not only half an acre of orchard plantings. But that community park is about the size of Town Plaza, which is about 22,000 square feet. So that is about half an acre. We, you know, I don't think I have the, when we are looking at this area right here, what we're very kind of cautious of, we weren't including some of these passeos that run into there and so forth. There's other areas that, that are open spaces. The idea was to have interconnection, to have great passeos and great pedestrian connections, to have the setbacks along Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard. And within the specific plan, it actually does, it's not contemplating one large turf, you know, one soccer field. That's not what the intent in the specific plan is, it's to spread out these, the open space.
The two largest areas are the park and the orchard that fronts Lark Avenue?
Well, no, I mean, there's, again, this is, and I think we have here, the perimeter lot coverage is about 40,000 square feet. That includes this area right here, and this area right here. That's about 11.2% of the total open space. So then there's, that's not 11.2 of the 30%, that's 11.2 of the 100% of the 30%, if that does make any sense. So, which gets a little bit complicated, but that is, so these areas, while, while significant, are not the only areas within the specific plan. This area right here is about a 13,000, 12,000, 13,000 square foot open space, that's about the size, you know, of a large, single-family lot without the home on it. So that is a nice park area. We have other areas, you know, when you, when you, I'll give an example. When you drive past the recently completed Lester Lane, and I don't want to draw on any previous developments as bad examples, but it, they have a small park in there that's about 5,000 square feet, which is similar to some of these parks that you might be looking at. And it actually has a sign on it that it's for private use only, and that it's only for residents enjoying...
I'm sorry, members of the audience?
That is.
I have to ask you to refrain from speaking.
So if you drive back in that, in that, that's the newer subdivision that was at the Swanson Ford site, there is a park on there with, with that sign. All of these spaces are open to the public, as we mentioned last night, 85% of them are open to the public. The orchards, though, I believe are 2.2 total acres.
So, just maybe if you could get to the other question is...
Yeah.
Why focus on spreading out the open space versus having it more concentrated and creating larger areas of open space?
I'm looking for the specific plan. You know, I'm going to try to pull up the information on the, within the specific plan. And, and if you don't mind, it could take me a moment, because the specific plan has certain sections that, again, identify having smaller, more neighborhood, if you want to call them pocket parks, et cetera, and then also having, you know, interconnectivity with pedestrian ways.
While you research that, I believe Vice Chair Kane has a question, if it's a quick one? No? All right. We'll be patient.
I did have one more follow-up in open space when I get this answer, if I could, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
And that, that has to do with some of the things that were raised by Ms. Dorner yesterday, about the open space, and what percentage of it, of the green, what percentage is open green versus hardscape? I know it's all shown as green on here, but what percentage is hardscape versus actual green?
And she was specifically referring to, we have that calculation for the, for this area in its entirety, and that's what you see when we have to break, I think, I believe it's 22, I think it's in your staff report, 22-plus percent of green space versus the, I believe it's 39% of overall, which includes plazas, includes the multi-use trails, which you cannot include as part of your green open space, which we have both within the project as well as on the perimeter of the project.
And that does not include hardscape?
It does, again, the 39% does, but the 22-plus percent does, does not. And she was specifically referring to a very small portion of our plan, where we do have some enclosed first-level spaces for private use. And we are referring that, to that in our plan as private open space. And we assumed, and that is not within the 85% of publicly accessible open space that we stated yesterday.
Right, I guess I might, I should have framed...
And the assumption, the assumption is, in those spaces, that we would have about 50% hardscape and 50% softscape. But even if those private open spaces were 100% hardscape, we would still have above, far above, 20% of the green space that's required for the specific plan.
Perhaps I should have framed my question, I was talking about the public open space.
Okay, so the, and I...
What percentage of that is hardscape versus green?
Well, we have, we have, I don't know if we have that exact calculation, but we have 22-point-plus percent that's green, and then 39%. And so you end up with, the idea was that you would, would get about 10% of sidewalks, multi-use paths, plazas, and so forth, minimum, and we end up with about 19% as those things. Some of that is adapting 10-foot-wide multi-use paths to have great pedestrian and bicycle connections, and you do not count that towards your green space.
Right, okay.
Vice Chair Kane, and then Commissioner Hanson.
So, okay, to get back to your original, in Policy 03, Neighborhood Open Space Network, says, "Provide an open space network of neighborhood parks, passive open space, plazas, pedestrian passeos, landscape buffers, and/or common open space per specific plan open space standards." And then it goes on to discuss what might be appropriate uses, not, no requirements, but what might be appropriate uses.
Number you're referring to?
That is Policy 03, it's on 2-11 of the specific plan.
Got it.
The goal says, above that says, "To integrate an interconnected system of open spaces, parks, and plazas within the specific plan area." And right before that, it says, "The specific plan area shall encourage outdoor activity by integrating a variety of open spaces such as pocket parks, parks and plazas, common gathering areas, courtyards, pedestrian passeos, clubhouse and barbecue areas, walkable street streets lined with large shade trees and active streetscape, landscape buffers, and ample seating areas."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Kane? Followed by Commissioner Hanson.
Last night, at about 11:15, I thought Commissioner Erickson asked an outstanding question, and I think I remember you giving some outstanding answers, but it was late. And, so what I actually did was, I went back to the tape during the day and found the segment, and came up with some additional issues. This concerns Buildings or Complex 24 and 25. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page 1.0.
Of the application.
I had earlier talked about 24, sort of sticking out and being right on top of the garage and the gas, and concerns about distance from, from gasoline. And Commissioner Erickson was talking about, not just Building 24, but Garden Cluster 25 as well. He didn't say this, but I'm, I'm saying that, that they just kind of sort of stick out like sore thumbs, like they got squeezed in there. And I, I may need to talk to Ms. Krugmeyer about, about that. Commissioner Erickson asked questions along the lines of, is this excellence in planning and good long-term planning? Because he made the point, and I remember the mantra, "Commercial, commercial, commercial, housing, commercial," and they just stick out in the middle of a whole commercial row. Larry Cannon had some concerns, my interpretation is the isolation of the two buildings. And in his last letter, asked that you do something about that, and I think, and Ms. Krugmeyer may know, the other architect responded that they'd put in more lanes and more access and more something. And I'm just saying, you know, I appreciate that, but it tends to underscore their isolation, that they would put in more roads and lanes. And so the question, I suppose, is, and I heard your answers to Commissioner Erickson last night, but, you know, you've got these guys opening on Los Gatos Boulevard, and you've got them in the middle of commercial, and they just seem alienated. The question is, have you thought about trying to put them somewhere else? Move those, move the other thing to the east, and maybe... other thing to the east and maybe have some open space there. But there's, Garden Cluster 24 is a building, and then it calls itself a fiveplex. So that means, what, there's two dwelling units in the Building 24 itself, and then three separate little tiny condos?
Yeah. So the way that those buildings function is, they, they are three buildings, or three units in the front, and then there is, it's sort of like a carriage lane where a cat, excuse me, carriage unit above the garages. So you end up with, I believe, five units in that area. So what our constraints were, which was what I was speaking yesterday about, is that this is Los Gatos Boulevard. You can confirm with staff whether or not I made an accurate assumption, but we wanted to, we were told pretty early on that ingress and egress out of this area, given the right turn lane and how people are starting to merge onto that right turn lane, there's a conflict of movements. And so you ended up with a, you have a 30-foot orchard setback, you have a 20-foot, two-story setback. We actually, our two-story goes to right about here. So we don't go to 35-foot until beyond there. You're right, this is a constrained area, and perhaps you could put open space in this area and instead put more units to get to your 20-units breaker. In the community park, for example, you start shifting buildings around. And we didn't feel that ultimately placing open space on the Boulevard was necessarily going to be the most useful open space, and nor is there a requirement for us to not have these buildings on here. In fact, they're permitted use. So while I understand what your, where your thought process is with respect to continuity along the Boulevard, long-range planning, and so forth, these are permitted in, within the specific plan.
I'm sure they're permitted. It doesn't make them a good idea. Especially, you know, I'm talking about those six tiny little units that open out onto Los Gatos Boulevard. They're children waving in the wind, and those six could be relocated, whereas the garden clusters, Building 24 and 25, have a huge setback right where they are. And it looks like it was necessary to squeeze those guys in. And it just doesn't strike me as good design, especially when they're surrounded by gasoline stations and large commercial buildings.
Right. So we obviously are constrained in this area by existing, the existing build-out in this area as well as access. And ultimately, the buyer of these units will know that these units are fronting onto Los Gatos Boulevard. We're not going to somehow shield Los Gatos Boulevard.
I think, I think they'll figure that out. Even, even if they are young millennials, they'll figure that out. But I don't think it, my opinion is, I put this in the form of a question, you know, you may want to relocate, relocate those, because it doesn't seem to be the best design characteristic of other good designs in the project. And I don't think it goes to the look and feel. It goes to the look and squeeze in. And it's
We, I do appreciate your comment, and it's something we can continue.
All right. So I'm going to take that as a did you know. And I'm going to move on to Commissioner Hanson. I'm sorry.
I had a question about the parks relating to Ms. Dorner's presentation yesterday. Is it true that none of the parks have any playground equipment?
There is not playground equipment. That's actually one of, if you have feedback that you would like to have playground equipment, we would enjoy hearing that. But there is no, again, requirement for playground equipment, and given who our target buyer is, that's not necessarily what this audience is interested in. But that is something that we'd be happy to discuss.
I, I don't know that we did or we didn't. I just wanted to understand. And given that, I think most people are assuming that with three and, but three and dens, it could be bedrooms, four-bedroom places, that people with children will move in there. And so then, you know, I, at least when I raised my kids, we used to take them to the park with the playground equipment.
Yeah, we do, we do oftentimes, when we're building communities, integrate a tot lot. There are spaces for a tot lot within this community. We've put it, put other facilities like bocce ball courts, fire pits, a dog park. We've put other types of amenities, again, to fill the unmet needs of Los Gatos. So there, there is an opportunity. There is a lovely park right nearby at Highland Oaks, and there is a tot lot that's there. And again, that, because you can find this in other areas of town, and because we are running everything through these unmet needs filter and the shalls within the specific plan, we did not provide a tot lot, but that's something we're open to talking about.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a moment to just remind the audience to please refrain from comments or any booing or hissing, and please respect the other differences in opinion that we all have. So thank you for your cooperation. Was your question answered? All right. Do we have further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hudes?
Couple of minor ones about the plans. And maybe this was covered, but I might have missed it. Who manages the community gardens and orchards? And is the orchard parking considered open space? And are there walnut trees that are being utilized in the plans?
Sure. I can start with this. We do have our agrarian consultant here, Zach Lewis. He's helped us design the varietals of the orchard trees. We've put a tremendous amount of time and thought into how we maintain this. Ultimately, this is owned and maintained and managed by the HOA. There'll be an operating plan in place, which Zach can talk about. And this is, there are some walnut trees integrated. They're in this region, I believe. There is also some vineyards along here. So there are both in that area. We're open to talking about different varietals or different, more walnuts, as we spoke in the last Planning Commission meeting. But I think Zach might want to talk about how we arrived at the 544 different trees, orchard trees and the species.
Good evening. Could you just rephrase the question again, to give you the best answer?
I had three questions. Who manages the community gardens and orchards? Is the orchard parking considered open space? And when and how are the walnut trees being utilized?
Okay. In terms of how the, the orchard and the gardens will be managed, that's going to be a part of a design process based on the prospective buyers and the people that are inhabiting the community. I'm putting forward like a package of recommendations and ideas on how to maintain community gardens and the orchard. There's a variety of examples. Through the HOA and being able to pay for somebody that's going to manage that, you could have that person manage the orchard entirely, and I'm giving an entire packet on how to manage it. Or if there's interest from the people that are actually living there, they would have the opportunity to maintain a role in that as well. That's one way to go about it. With the community gardens, again, the, it could be managed by an individual that runs the landscape, but the better way to do it would be to integrate it and have people that are actually living there manage the plots themselves and take home and share in the produce. What was the second question?
Is the orchard parking considered open space?
Regarding the open space calculations, we used what were the dimensions and specifications within the specific plan on every calculation for open space. So the, the answer is that if there are elements within the parking that I believe are six feet or greater wide, then they can be counted in open space. If they are narrower than that, then they are not able to be counted as open space or green space.
Maybe I could direct your attention to 2.2. There's a picture on the bottom that says orchard parking. And then right next to it is an area that looks like that might be what we're talking about. Is that the orchard parking, and is that entire area considered open space?
No, it's not. So just the part that the, just the part that's actually planted, there we have it. Okay, thank you. A little, a little strip where you plant the tree is permitted to be counted as open space. The parking lot is not open space. The paved area is not open space.
Thank you.
I, I would also like to add that there has been a tremendous amount of thought put into the open spaces here, not just in two dimensions, but the experience in three dimensions. How one travels through these spaces, where they get narrower, where they get wider, where they open up, where you have this kind of landscape environment, where you have a different kind of landscape environment. So as you travel through the North Forty, you have a variety of experiences, as you have a variety of experiences in the town of Los Gatos. And the, the open space also accommodates a multimodal path. And as we get into the transition district, the open space embraces a pedestrian environment that's a little bit different than the Lark District. So we have, there's just been a tremendous amount of thought going into the exact dimensions of these spaces, how the tree canopies are, how the walkways are, how they relate to stoops, how the fact that all the garage doors are facing the back and not facing the streets. So anyway, there's a lot of layering that has gone on here that has, has gone into the open space plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, the public testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed. So you may have a seat, Ms. Baker. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, we will take a break. We will come back in 10 minutes. If you could all please take a seat. The 10 minutes are up. Please take a seat. Thank you, everybody. We have a multifaceted application which requires a thorough analysis. So before we evaluate the items on page five of the staff report, do commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question, because this is the first time since I've been in the commission that we looked at a vesting tentative map. And, and it seemed to me that the answer would be yes, but if you're looking at the architecture and site in the vesting tentative map, is there, would, could there be a scenario where you would say yes to one and not no to the other? Because they're, they're kind of tied in to each other. Does my question make sense?
It does make sense. And generally, they are locked together when you have the, the map and the architecture and site, because the map actually lays out the footprints. So they are tied together, and there are separate findings for both the map application and the architecture and site application.
Right. And that's why I asked the question, because the findings were different, but it seemed to me they kind of went hand in hand.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a couple of questions for staff. I think the first, my guess is, the first couple of questions will be for Mr. Morley and his staff that relate to traffic and off-site improvements. And then either the, my subsequent question will either be for him or potentially for Mr. Paulson or Mr. Schultz.
Just wondered if the chair wanted to structure this section of the discussion at all, because we have the possibility of being in a lot of different areas.
We do. And my, my hope was to walk through the items on page five, starting with housing and open space and view corridors, moving to traffic and additional environmental review, which traffic would be second. Would you mind holding off on that? Commissioner Erickson?
I serve at the pleasure of the council and at the pleasure at meetings of the chair.
I am so flattered. Thank you for your understanding. Vice Chair Kane?
Before we begin that journey, I have a question of staff. The eventual motion on this project is reasonably huge compared to other motions we have had. Is the net result of that binary? In other words, if we found compliance with 15 of the 16 requirements, and someone makes an issue on number 16, would that, would that cause a motion to fail? It's not a motion, though. It's a recommendation, isn't it? We're not voting to approve or deny. We're making a recommendation to town council. So if one of us had an issue with certain planks in the 15 conditions and findings, what would that do to the motion to recommend or not recommend?
Well, that would be reflected in however the commissioner votes on the item in total. So there could be additional comments added to the record as far as, you know, I agree with X, Y, and Z, but not A. So there
So we don't have to agree to everything. Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
This is a question, I guess maybe for the attorney. I read the letter from the applicant on the July 7 letter, and there was a lot of discussion about objective and subjective standards. And when I go and I read the specific plan, which contains the standards that are going to be applied, I don't see anywhere that says, "This is a subjective standard. The following is an objective standard." So I take all the words seriously, and I want to see whether this is acceptable. So when I look at the words, I say, it's how do you apply the standards that are in there? And some of those words can be supported or denied by facts. And that is where I see something being objective.
And I agree with that statement.
And where I can't see something supported by facts, then it falls in the subjective category. Is that a fair way for me to operate?
That's a fair way to operate. Yes.
Okay, let's get started. We will start our discussion on page five, under analysis, with the housing topic, which was quite a hot ticket based on public testimony and written communication. So would anybody like to start the conversation as it relates to housing? I have a question then, and this will be for staff. So there was testimony we received last night about the RENA requirements. So if this gets built, how many units actually meet the requirements? Is it 50? Is it 270 slash 320? What is it?
Well, I'll, I'll begin, and if the attorney wants to jump in. So for the planning exercise of creating the housing element, the town is required to show how it can accommodate the town's regional housing needs. And so through that exercise, different-sized jurisdictions have kind of default densities for what housing and community development will allow that jurisdiction to, for the housing element portion of the planning exercise, count as affordable. The town's is 20 dwelling units per acre. And so that's where we got these 20 dwelling units per acre, the buyright development for the 13 and a half acres for the North Forty. We are simply with the housing element, planning and showing that we can accommodate that housing in the town. We're not, the town ultimately isn't building all of that housing. So the market will come forward with applications, which may or may not be on some of our housing sites for the housing sites inventory. And then when those are built, they will be credited into the category at which they are, their affordability level. And so that's where, that's staff's understanding. And so in this case, we will have, 50 of the units will be in one of the affordable level categories, and the remainder of the units will be in the above moderate category, which is a category of the regional housing needs assessment. So we will get credit for those units, but all of those units above the 50 will not be credited as affordable housing units, because they won't be restricted. That is staff's understanding, unless the town attorney has any additional.
What you have to remember is the housing element is just a planning document. It's just to show the state, because the state has mandated it and every other jurisdiction to come up with a plan to show what your RENA numbers are and that you have the ability somewhere out there to make these types of units available. Certainly, the applicant could have come in with all of those different categories, but we can't require him, even though our housing element says that. That's just a planning document. The, the application in front of you has the 50 very low, which we'll get credit for. And the other one then will fall into the, will get credit for the, the above market rate. But they're still part of our total RENA numbers of the 619.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
And then, and when we come back at this in 2022, it'll be reevaluated, and we'll have to show where the numbers can be met, if not on this site, still elsewhere.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to also check my understanding, and that is, my understanding is that under the specific plan and under various requirements on us, including what started with the state, we are required to take 13.5 acres of the North Forty, which is more than the first phase, and see that those have the 20-plus units, not less than that, but that, that many. We have talked about the possibility of being able to We have talked about the possibility of being able to move those, but we've also talked about the fact, we've heard from the applicant, the difficulty of moving them, for example, on the northerly part, it has to be above retail, and that makes it very difficult to achieve 20 units to the acre. So I guess the question simply is, somewhere on the north 40, there must be 13 acres, or 13 and 1/2 acres, with 20 units to the acre. So we don't have any discretion on that. We may have discretion, may have discretion on moving it, but we don't have discretion on reducing it.
Correct. So if, let's say, down the road, the entire north 40 area is built out, and we are still in our current planning period, and we haven't hit the 13 and 1/2 acre threshold, then we would have to accommodate another site that would provide 20 dwelling units per acre, rezone it for the buy right development. So really, there's some factors that weigh in there as far as, you know, where are we at in the housing element cycle, and, you know, how long does that timeframe take?
You said the next cycle starts when?
2023 or 2023.
We have no knowledge as to when the north portion, if at all, will develop.
We don't, and we're currently just evaluating the Phase 1 applications.
Commissioner Hudes.
So just as a follow-up to that, I think it, this is something that, although I've been involved in this for a while, I'm not quite clear on. The 13 and 1/2 acres, do they have to be contiguous?
There's nothing in there that says that they have to be contiguous.
So how do you get to density if you had, let's say, 13 and 1/2 individual acres peppered across that? How is density actually measured in that case?
So the density is measured on the dwelling units, and so using your example, you could have 13 one-acre sites at 20 dwelling units per acre, and then another half acre at 20 dwelling units per acre, so that would be 20 for each of those acres, and then 10 for the half acre that's left over. Typically, that's not how things would come forward, and that's not how development generally occurs, but I don't know that there's any restriction as to that being a possibility.
How is a site defined? How, you know, I said acres, but what, is that a parcel? What is a site? How does that relate?
So the example that they put up earlier, and it's on the back wall, is how they are calculating, and that is exhibit, where would exhibit that was? So we'll find the exhibit, but that's how they're calculating it, is those blocks of gray contain a certain number of acres, and then they're looking at the number of units that are within those blocks, and that gives you the dwelling units per acre.
Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner O'Donnell.
I had a question about the density bonus, because it came up in the letter from the applicant's attorney, and it was in our packet as well. And I worked on the housing element board, so I had some understanding, but this is fairly complex. My understanding of the density bonus is that, what kicks in the density bonus is if you have the required percentage of affordable units as a percentage of the total units that are being requested. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's a, you know, varying scales.
Right. So, just hypothetically, if it was 100 units, and 20% of them or 40% of them are affordable, you could get the density bonus?
Correct.
Whatever the table says.
Some percentage of density bonus, that is correct.
Okay. So, and then as it stands right now, not all of the potential units are being built out, that could be built out anyways, so the density bonus that they would get if this particular project was approved wouldn't be 100% of the bonus that they could get if they built out the other 44 units.
Correct. And actually, so they're doing 237 in the first phase is their base, and so there's, to get to the 270, there's 33 units left that could be accommodated in a future phase. And so that, coupled with the 33% bonus, if they met the particular criteria, gets to the 44 or 45, there's a rounding question, but it's there.
So it's our understanding that the statement that was made in the applicant's attorney's letter is not correct, that they can get the 35% bonus on the amount of units they build as long as they meet the required affordable percentage?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Before I get to my question, I want to make sure I understood that last answer. You say that is inconsistent with what their lawyer said?
If I read the letter correctly, and perhaps I read it incorrectly, it said that if you don't approve the current proposal, we can't get the density bonus.
You won't get a density bonus unless you build something, right?
I think, I think it said the full 270 units.
You mean the 35% is applied to the 270 units? And it's what, I guess, I'm not following the question.
So maybe if you can, how I understood the question was that if they get the density bonus, that, you know, they have to be approved at the current density that they're proposing. Is that the statement that you were looking at in the letter? Do you have it in front of you?
I probably should pull up the exact wording, but...
Yeah. While she's doing that, and I would like to go back to it when she gets there, because that's an important point. Somewhat on the same line, the applicant has said, "Look, we're required to get 13.5 acres at the higher density," and they said, "We're doing it." Now, there's been discussion, and I want to pin this down, that there's a piece of the transitional area, which is not before us tonight, but there is a piece, and nobody's told us the acreage, but somebody said, "Well, I guess it's three or four acres, I don't know." And then, in addition to that transitional acreage, which is not before us, but apparently under the control of Grobner, there's the north 20 acres or whatever it is. I'm wondering if an applicant comes in and says, "You are required to have 13.5 acres at higher density," and they submit that, can they be denied on some basis, like, "We don't want it within that geographical area, yes, we want it in the 40 acres, but we don't necessarily want it in, for example, all of it in the first phase?" Because that is what the attorney said we could not do, and what is our opinion on that?
So, Brian, I understand the question correctly is, is so, once the 13.5 acres have been developed out residential completely, and you have the number of housing at 345, then there's, the specific plan is built out, and it would not allow any more residential units on the north 40 unless an amendment was done?
That's not my question.
Okay.
My question is, an applicant comes in and says, "Here's your specific plan. One of the things that is in your specific plan is I've got to develop 13.5 acres." Now, we could say to them, "Oh, you don't have to develop it, the 40 acres has to develop it." And so, as I read the attorney for the applicant, the attorney for the applicant said, "Look, we've submitted everything, and in their view, pursuant to your specific plan, including the 13.5," and the letter goes on to say, "You don't have the discretion to tell us to move some of that high-density acreage." So, for example, say, "Well, we'll take 10 acres here, and we'll take 3.5 someplace else." She has said, "No, you can't do that." So really, what I'm asking is, do we have a position on that? Is she, are we going to accept that as correct, or do we think, "No, you could require it to be moved"?
No, I'm going to allow the planning commission to move those units for the discussion for this evening. We're still working through that, and that comes down to whether it's an objective or subjective. But for yours, since it's a recommendation, I, my opinion at this point in time is, is you do have that ability to move.
Okay.
But that, that could, that could change when it gets to council. But I'd rather give you the ability to make those changes as you see, but again, you have to at least tie that somewhere between the objective standards within the...
Okay, so I understand you say, at the moment, that's true, but by the time it gets to council, you may have sufficient time to have done more legal analysis, and that's fine, there's not binding on that. Did you find the question you wanted?
I did. Okay, so I think the difference in what I asked and what is actually said in here, it says, "Density bonus law requires the town to grant the density bonus and approve the 320 units the project is entitled to. Density bonus law contains no grounds on which a density bonus may be denied." And so my question was around, it was around the number of units, not whether they would get the density bonus or not. And so I'm, what I'm saying is, if instead of 320 units, let's just say, I'm just throwing some number, it was 200, and some, 120 were deferred to the north, you know, Phase 2, as long as they met the requirement for the affordable housing, they would get the density bonus against the 200 units.
Correct.
Right. And we wouldn't question that anyways, because we have a policy in order in town that says that, yes, you get that.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hudes.
So in the below-market program, I had a few questions about that, and I had some questions last night, referring to the staff report, March 30th, page 8, and the attorney's letter, October 21st.
Can you please let us know what exhibit the letter is?
Exhibit 8, attachment 8, isn't it, covered 21st?
Yes, thank you. So let's start with the staff report, page 11, I'm sorry, page 8, March 30th. Sorry, I'm having trouble finding it here. So is, the item B, is the application in conformance with the town's BMP program? And what are the consequences if it were not in compliance with the BMP program?
So I think, to kind of drive it down a little bit further, I think the question you're asking is regarding whether, because our BMP says it has to be integrated within and spread out throughout the project as opposed to being on one site, is that make it in violation of our BMP?
Correct, and those are the things that are in the attorney's letter.
And so, but what it does say in our BMP, "We're feasible." And so, when state law requires senior housing to be located altogether, to me, my opinion was, is you can reach the opinion that, yes, it's not feasible to spread it out in this scenario, because state and federal law does not allow you to do that. That's the opinion I rendered to the CDC when it was in front of them. And because throughout all the talks of the specific plan, this senior housing was such a viable component to the project, it's very easy to make the argument that it is in compliance with the BMP because of the fact of the federal and state law do not allow you to spread this out.
So despite the fact that the housing is concentrated in one area, and that it is something that you can recognize as being separate, and also has smaller square footage, those, I'm calling them exceptions, are allowed because that's the only way that this would be feasible.
If you want senior housing.
That's the finding we have to make.
Certainly, certainly the other part would that be, was to do away with senior housing and disperse the BMPs throughout the entire project. They would not be senior housing, because you're not allowed to do that, so you would lose senior housing in order to do the BMP. And that certainly you could make, but that's not finding whether it's in compliance or not, it's a whole different product.
And that's the combination of senior and affordable, or senior and BMP. It's not senior in and of itself, it's that combination in order to get that combination.
Senior in and of itself also has to be, even if it was senior without it being low-income, it needs to be connected.
Okay.
And senior would be considered one of our unmet needs. Further comments on housing from commissioners? Commissioner Hanson?
So, back to this issue about where the units are located. So the specific plan is silent about how the units should be distributed. The guidance that is given is that the amount of residential is most in the Lark District, and then goes down as you go to the Northern District. But residential is permitted in all three districts, with the limitation, especially in the Northern District, that it has to be over commercial. But in the case of, you know, we had discussed this yesterday, in the case of the Northern District, aside from the fact that it looked like it might be difficult, it may not be impossible, and also, it might be the case that that's something that millennials might want, which is one of the potential unmet needs. So my question is, since there isn't really any guidance about how this stuff should be distributed, then is, there isn't any guidance that you can't distribute it, so I'm trying to understand, you know, what latitude we have. Because you can make an argument, certainly, that having the housing distributed is going to make a significant less strain on resources by just having units in different places, but the specific plan doesn't tell you how many can be where.
It does not. So that's where you have to, on the strain on resources, you need to tie that to the infrastructure or other objective standards that you can find within the specific plan.
So I would say you're referring to the unspecificity of the specific plan.
I am.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
The only testimony we have so far is that putting 20 units to the acre on the northern portion is not only impracticable, but is impossible under the height requirements and the requirement that be on the second floor. So I understand it, the town has not independently tried to determine whether you could do 20 units to the acre above retail. The testimony we received was that you could not. So were we to find that, do it anyway. Apparently, we have nothing in the record to support that.
And I think it's important, as the, I believe the town attorney said before, is you need to tie that stuff to evidence that's in the record to support those findings from the objective standards.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, as an example, the senior housing that's currently in the transition district could be in another, in the Northern District, for instance. I think the statement I've seen is that you could not do all 270 at 20 units per acre in the Northern District. That's the testimony that I recall. I'm not even sure that we've backed that up, but that's what I've seen. Not that some couldn't be done in that.
I think the testimony that was provided was for a 2.34 something acre site, and so that was the testimony that was provided by the applicant that's in the record.
Could you repeat that, the 2.?
I'll get the exact, I think it's 2.34 acre site is what their example was, showing how it would not work, because it came out to 13 or 14 dwelling units per acre, even at that size of unit.
Right.
Commissioner Hanson?
So, taking that to a different point, I don't know what would happen if it went to the logical conclusion, but I have to believe that when the specific plan was created, that, and the decision was made to put a presidential only over commercial in the Northern District, that this particular issue that we're in, where you have to have 20 units per acre, wasn't a consideration. Because of the housing element, although it got completed before the specific plan, you know, it didn't come to a logical conclusion. And so I find it hard to think that, we're in a situation where if you have literally, all of the units have to be, other than the bonus units, have to be zoned at 20 units per acre, because 270 are allowed and 270 are required. So that basically says you can't have housing in the Northern District unless it's with the bonus. So I don't know if the makers of the plan would have intended that way, or if it's even valid that you can't possibly do it, but clearly, the senior housing that's in the transition district that's proposed, as Commissioner Hudes pointed out, has a waiver on the height restriction.
Commissioner Erickson, followed by Commissioner O'Donnell.
So I was just going to comment that...
So I was just going to comment that my recollection of the testimony from the applicants with respect to whether or not one could build, could meet the 20 units per acre standard in the Northern District was a combination of the limitation on the fact that it had to be built over commercial and the height limitation that is imposed on that. And so the combination of those two made it not possible to develop 20 units per acre. That's my recollection. I could be wrong, but that's my recollection of the testimony of the applicants.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
That is my recollection too. But my point was that the, what I recall being presented to us was that were this built out as proposed, there would still be 45 units for the Northern District. Now, that's a recollection, but I think that.
That's correct.
Okay. So it isn't that there would be no units for the Northern. There would be, under this scenario, there would be 45 units that could be built on the Northern portion.
Commissioner Erickson, followed by Commissioner Hudes.
Let me ask the staff a clarification of that. There's only 30, if I understand how the numbers work, there's only 33, what I would call base market units left of the 270. So that without qualifying for a density bonus, the maximum number of the units that could be built on the, remaining in subsequent phases, assuming this phase were passed as proposed, the, there would, there would be, without a density bonus, only 33 units allowed. And at the maximum, if they qualified, there's either another 11 or 12, depending upon how whether you put in an Excel spreadsheet round up or round down. So there's either, there's a 33 to potential 44, 45 range that's possible. Correct?
That's correct.
Could we try to get our numbers straight then? Because they can't both be correct. I just said something diametrically opposed to that. I'd like to think they could both be correct. Just to give me the numbers again, forget the density bonus, I'm just forgetting for the moment. How many units were to be put on, it was 750 or something, but they broke it down to a lower number. What was that number?
The maximum in the specific plan is 270.
Okay. And that's, in essence, what's being built on, that's for the whole 40 or for the first phase?
For the whole specific plan. However, the base dwelling units for this first phase is 237.
Okay. And that's what the 35% is applied?
That is correct.
So 235 minus 270, it gets down to what Commissioner Erickson said?
That's 237 minus 270 is the 33 units base that are left. And then should someone apply for a density bonus, they could get up to additional 12 units. That's where the 45 number comes from and the range that Commissioner Erickson was speaking of.
Commissioner Hudes, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I did want to understand clearly whether Phase One equals Lark and Transition 100%. Or are there elements that are not part of that?
There is a portion of the Lark District, or sorry, of the Transition District that is not part of Phase One.
And so if there were a desire, there would not be the inability to have units go into those areas, correct?
That's correct. There could be units in the remainder of the Transition District in some future phase.
And that could be either in the northeast corner or the, yeah, whatever direction that is on the, on the upper right, or potentially in the parking lot area behind the buildings.
Correct. Generally, that kind of chunk that's cut out, and I think there's a little bit more as you come down to the boulevard.
So if there were reconfiguration that caused things to shift, that same number might be achieved in some of those areas in addition to whatever might be achieved in the Northern District?
That is possible.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
We had a number on, I don't know what to call that, but it's part of the transition that is not before us. Does anybody have a number for the acreage?
We do not have that number. We can get that number.
Well, we know the total acreage of the property. We know the northern, northern area, and we know what's being developed.
So we don't have all of the districts broke down by acreage?
Okay.
And so if we did, then I would be able to do that simple calculation for it. I can definitely get that, or as part of the recommendation, we can carry that forward.
Just so we had some orders of magnitude, does anybody have, oh, here, this may be acres?
We may have some information forthcoming.
It would be helpful for us to have some idea.
So just, just for the record, this is a document that the applicant provided, and they're showing 4.8 acres, and we can put this up on the overhead if that would be helpful.
Just for the purpose of discussion, if we were to assume 4.8 acres?
There's, there's also a diagram that shows a sliver of Transition District to the right of Phase One development. Does that exist, or is that an error?
That does exist. And so why don't we just put this up on the board so everyone can take a look at it?
That would be helpful.
And that way, we're all talking about what we're. So that blue area is the notch, and then as you can see to the right of the proposed Phase One, there is a leg of additional Transition District. And it's 4.8 acres, correct?
Commissioner Hanson?
All right, so the numbers aren't adding up completely for me. So it says the Northern District is 10.4 acres, and if I add the 10.4 to the 4.8, that's like 15, 16. And I thought there was like, more like, close to 20 left. Is it that five acres that they have as a cutout? I mean.
I don't have the whole thing in front of me, so I can't tell you. And apparently, we're having some technical difficulties.
The Northern is the combination of the gray and the yellowish color?
Yes.
Yep. That must be, if I'm doing the math, it would have to be, yeah, okay.
But the only thing that is not encumbered with the second story requirement, in addition to what we're going over, is that 4.8.
Correct. And so I guess to Commissioner Hanson's, I wish I could read that far, but the 10.4 and the 5 is the 15.4 that you mentioned, and another 4.8 gets you up over 20 acres. So you actually are about half, so that is probably accurate.
So question to that is about how many units at 20 units per acre could be in that 4.8? You can't just divide and, you know, come up with whatever it is, 96 or whatever, because you've got setbacks and.
But that's the maximum, so that.
Things like that, so.
We would look at the maximum, so the maximum that could be accomplished there would be 96, based on 20 dwelling units per acre. Now, whether or not that can be achieved from a site planning and layout perspective, that's an exercise that would be for the next, for another application.
Okay. So is that a number that we can work with as 96?
4.8 acres times 20 dwelling units per acre yields you 90.6, or yields you 96 units, so that is.
We know that's a gross number.
Correct.
So, and we don't know how much would have to be dedicated for streets and whatever else. So it is a gross number.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Hudes?
Are there implications of us using a gross number, and this may be for the attorney, using a gross number rather than a, an examined or planned number?
You can go ahead and use any number you would like.
I would say that using the gross number, the implications potentially are that if someone comes forward with an application, they're not able to accomplish 20 dwelling units per acre, A. Or B, they don't propose any residential in that 4.8 acres. So then you're at zero. And then you're left with that moving forward to the Transition District, which has the height and above commercial restrictions previously discussed.
Right. But that application could be denied, though. Correct.
Which, which application?
That had no housing.
The potential one.
Yes. I mean, you'd have to look at the standards in the specific plan. So yes, someone could come forward with all commercial, and the planning commission would make that determination.
Do we have further questions on housing? Commissioner Erickson?
Do you, let me be sure to understand what the chair's pleasure is. Do you want questions or comments at this point in time?
Actually, I want both. Because we might have questions of staff as we're asking questions now, but I would like the comments at the same time so that we can do our analysis on housing, traffic, open space, and look and feel. So to your pleasure, Commissioner Erickson.
Okay. So I have a comment, and I want to do a preference to the comment and say that I fully understand that we cannot make decisions on housing issues based on school impacts.
That is correct.
As a lead-in to it, okay? But we've had a lot of public testimony about the fact that a motivation, I'm not talking about a motivation by the commission, but a motivation from the public, expressed motivation by the public, would be to push, would be to relocate housing in more northern and across the school boundary lines in order to address crowding in the schools. Okay. I want to suggest that that may or may not be a smart strategy that would serve the residents who are in the Los Gatos School Districts well. This is a matter of information, so it's on the record. Here's what could, here's some information. So property tax revenue, which is an important source of revenue for the school districts, both the high school district and the elementary school district, since they are basic aid districts, they do not get funding from the state on an average daily attendance. They get it. So to the extent that there's property developed inside of the school district, they get property tax for that. The Union School, the Los Gatos Union School District has also entered into a voluntary agreement with the developers that provides for them to be compensated either in the form of land or in the form of monetary compensation. I believe that it's $23,000, if I'm recollection is right, per residential unit that is built, that is, that is owned by the applicant at the point in time they develop it and is in the school district. So let's assume for the moment that this were, this or some other number of units were built in, in the side of the school district. And let's assume that some number of residential units are built in the north part of the school, the north part of the thing that are not in the school districts here. It is highly likely, and the risk involved is that, that the families that would live in that area will apply for inter-district transfers. And it's, and the, the district will likely turn them down. And those people are likely to appeal that to the County Office of Education. And one of the important criterias that the County Office of Education uses to, to resolve those kind of appeals has to do with neighborhoods. And we have been very public about the fact that this is a neighborhood. And so the risk is, if in fact, we push more out of the school district and push them out of our school districts, and I'm classifying the two Los Gatos ones north, that in fact, we will reduce both in perpetuity, the property tax revenue that goes to the school districts, and we will reduce the short-term funding that comes to the Union School District to address them. And in effect, and if in effect, they were to grant the school, the, the inter-district transfers, the school districts would be burdened with the expense of educating those students with no revenue associated with it. That's a big risk to it. So not, that's not a basis upon which we could make any decision about it, but just for the record, it may not be the best strategy to reduce the number of residential units if the motivation, the unspoken motivation, would be to try to address crowding in the schools.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Erickson. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, it's very helpful to understand that. For me personally, I'm going to stay totally away from that area in my deliberations. I, I don't have the comprehension of all of it that you do. And so for me, my exploration about the movement and relocation of units more has to do with could this, could the layout of the site be reconfigured in order to achieve some of the other design standards that are in the plan? And that's why I was pursuing, you know, the number that could be moved and that type of thing.
Commissioner Erickson, followed by Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah, I was going to say, the reason why I said the preface, my understanding is we cannot consider what I just said in our deliberation, so I wouldn't intend to either. But I felt a responsibility to help educate the public who has, we've had a huge number of public verbally and in writing, help us so, in an, in an effort to help educate the public about if they think that's a good strategy, and if they were to criticize us for, and I'm not saying we would or wouldn't, to not have pushed them that they, and that was their motivation, it would be helpful, I think, for them to understand.
Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Commissioner Hanson?
So again, this is, our discussions isn't so much to ask staff, at the moment at least. The other thing that I am mindful of, when we asked the applicant what would happen essentially if we removed some of the housing from this project, and we didn't talk about where it would go, but they basically said, well, you know, if you do that, then we have to fill in whatever we can't put housing on. And of course, we don't know what that would mean, but it's obviously going to be non-residential. And then we, we've had a lot of testimony about why the first part is so heavily residential, so we can all remember that. The only thing we don't have any evidence on, or couldn't, is if you said, let's say, instead of having 300-plus units there, let's take 100 units or whatever and move them, wherever we're going to move, either move them to the 4.8 acres or somehow move it so one would be, part of it would be on the 4.8, part of it would be on the Northern District. All I'm saying is if that were to occur, and if Grosvenor nevertheless pursued this development, and I don't know whether they would or they wouldn't, we don't, we won't know now what that means for the project. I mean, there will be a project, whether it'll be Grosvenor or somebody else, there will be a project, and we couldn't possibly know what the fill-in would be. So that's just another uncertainty. Now, some people may prefer the uncertainty to the certainty, but that is something that I'm concerned about.
Commissioner Hanson, next, and then Commissioner Hudes?
While we're not considering the school districts in our deliberations, this is simply a fact that, that when we were walking around the site, we were informed that the line for the school district is actually at the Northern District boundary. So if there was some housing deferred to the rest of the Transition District, it would continue to be in, in Los Gatos schools, was my understanding.
Thank you for pointing that out. Is that correct? Mr. Paulson?
I looked at the map on the school's website today for Los Gatos Union School District, and that's where it appears to be. We would have to go into assessor's records and those things to see. Sometimes those aren't exact maps.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, maybe I could comment. I looked at both school districts' maps, and they didn't match up.
They don't match up.
And yeah, the, one of them had sort of a big blurry line on it, and I couldn't really tell, so. But coming, 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 coming back to the comments about the fill-in, and I, I did listen very carefully to that, but I also, in participating in the, in the development of the specific plan, it was clear that these numbers were maximums. And the only place where we seem to be hitting minimums is in the housing and the density and all of that. So I think that, again, I, we could go to the specifics, but I don't believe that there are minimums that say they would have to. there are minimums that say they would have to fill in to achieve only a 30% open space, for instance, if it were not residential use.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm not suggesting that they're required to do that. I'm merely suggesting that most developers I've ever dealt with do try to maximize their profits, and if you take away five acres, let's say, of housing, they probably aren't going to turn it into a city park.
Any further comments on housing? Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to talk about some of the, the non-numerical, what I consider objective standards for this housing. And I'm referring to 2.4 in the specific plan. And it says, "Residential development shall be focused," and "shall" means we must do it, "on multifamily and unmet needs." So, the first part of that is multifamily, meaning that single-family detached homes are not encouraged or even permitted, other than the specific cottage cluster type, which isn't truly a single-family detached home. The second part of this is about the unmet needs, and I just wanted to make the comment that I remain very troubled that we would enter into any project to build over 300 units and not address the very most important and well-documented unmet need that we have, which is the seniors that are living in our town right now that are looking for step-down housing opportunities. And I heard all of the discussion about why we, from the applicant, why we can't do it, but I can't in good conscience feel like we're in compliance with the specific plan to go forward with a plan of over 300 housing units that does not address probably our most important unmet need.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, depending on your view of seniors and speaking as a senior, they have 167 one-bedroom units, and I can tell you that that's something that a senior could definitely go into.
Do they have stairs? Okay.
And they have 235 two-bedrooms, and some seniors even like two-bedrooms, like I do. Then they have 98 three-bedrooms. So, yes, you were going to tell me why the, what it should have to better appeal to seniors?
Well, I think one issue, and even the applicant mentioned it, is about not having stairs. So, having a single-story unit and not having to climb upstairs. So, the bottom line is, the applicant went into the whole focus group with the millennials, but we have this whole unmet need of seniors, and, you know, maybe it's not clear exactly what their requirements are, but it's not clear that this is going to meet their requirements. And there aren't, if you look at the application, there are very, very few, there are actually no single-story units at all, because they have the ground floor garages, and then there's, you know, a smaller percentage of two-story units. But, and other than the senior affordable housing, which is a very specific market, there isn't any unit that doesn't have stairs.
I just wanted to concur with Commissioner Hanson in that, in looking at the configuration of the units themselves, it did not seem to me that they were particularly senior-oriented in that, and it seemed as though there was the opportunity to do that in the, in more of a flat type of an arrangement. But, the developer chose not to pursue flats, I think because they couldn't get as many, you know, on the lot. But, for whatever reasons, I think those were conscious decisions that were made to have particular housing types that were, you know, not necessarily appealing to that demographic.
I would also concur with Commissioner Hudes and Commissioner Hanson, and I'm looking at the square footage of the units. I don't think seniors want to have big units. It's more house-to-clean, more personal belongings that you want to get rid of. And Commissioner O'Donnell, I don't know what the square footage of the units is over at Forbes Mill, but I would venture to say that they might be under 1,200 square feet.
My unit is 1,600 square feet.
So is mine, and I'm a senior, and it's too big. Commissioner Hudes?
I had a question for staff on the requirements for denial, and there's an ordinance 2209, which is, let's see. Oh, where is it? While we're looking for it, the, there was a ground, oh, here it is. I'm sorry, it's on exhibit 18, bottom of page 2, 2910-420. And, I wanted to understand whether this was a ground for denial. Town has adopted a housing element as part of the general plan, and the town has met or exceeded its share of the regional housing needs for the income category proposed for the development project. And so, I want to make sure, because I think that in the letter from the applicant's attorney, that was not one of the conditions that was listed as grounds for denial. I wanted to understand, number one, is it a condition, you know, does 2209 apply? And then, the second part of that question is, has the town met or exceeded its share of regional housing needs as of right now?
So, I don't think we need to get to the first one and the legal issues attached to whether we can or cannot, because we can't meet the second one. We have not met our regional needs for the affordable housing that's proposed.
As of right now, not in the future?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments? Questions on housing? Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to bring up an issue that I thought, and I'm not sure, you know, what to do with it, but I, I've seen all the resident reactions to the 35-foot mass of buildings, and I realize that it is permitted to go up to 35 feet in the specific plan, but with all of our standards, it's usually the number is the maximum, not a goal. And so, I wondered about this 35 feet, there's the cutout for the perimeter where they have to have a two-story, 25-foot, but that's just a portion of the edge and the perimeter overlay. And then, they did mention that there was a couple of other units near the community garden that were also two stories. But, I, what I'm struggling with is, I asked the question of the architect, the Lark District is supposed to be lower intensity. And so, then I kind of look at those, all these 35-foot buildings, and we walked the property, and I, I'm not seeing that it's lower intensity. And so, I wondered what could be done to make this more in compliance with the plan, because it doesn't seem to me to be lower intensity, and maybe I'm the only one that sees it that way. But I do, you know, it's clear that Lark District is supposed to be primarily residential, there's no doubt of that. That's clear in the plan, but the lower intensity, when you look at buildings that tall and you're walking through, and, you know, you can see with some of the paseos and stuff that, you know, you're going to be having 35-foot buildings as you're walking down, and I, I'm struggling with that being lower intensity than the transition district. So, I wondered if any thoughts on it?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I guess, when I found out that the 13.5 acres had a 20 units to the acre, it occurred to me that the density would be high. And if the density was high and there were open space, there's, something's got to give. And so, I guess, you're right, it would be nice to have all smaller buildings, but I'm not quite sure how you do that, if you have to get the density that is, they believe is required. So, you give up one thing or another, if you got rid of all the open space, maybe you could get lower buildings. If you keep the open space, maybe part of the trade-off is you get somewhat higher buildings. So, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have this imposition on us, telling us we've got to have 13.5 acres at 20 units to the acre. That's, to me, is the stumbling block that I don't think we have any discretion over, except to move it, although the testimony I heard from the applicant was credible, insofar as they thought that wasn't a good idea. But when we say that it's too intense or too dense, I think, yeah, that's probably true, and I wish we didn't have to do that. But my understanding is, we have no discretion in that regard. Now, if you can figure out a way to get 20 units to the acre for 13.5 acres and have all single stories, I'd go for that.
Well, I mean, one of our residents submitted a document to us with lower-sized units. And so, it certainly is technically possible, but you're correct. I mean, that, I know the reason why that 35-foot maximum was established in the specific plan, it was, you know, anticipating the density issue, but I'm troubled about it being such a big part of the Lark District.
Another thought that I have is, you know, there could be some undergrounding done as well, perhaps cellar space or underground parking, and that would reduce the height and perhaps some of the intensity. I don't know what comments other commissioners might have on that, I'd be interested in hearing them. Commissioner Hudes?
No, I was going to agree with that. I think the, and, you know, we asked the applicant about the possibility of cellars or undergrounding, it seemed to be more of an economic issue than a real feasibility issue. And, you know, so, you know, faced with, you know, the possibility of not having that housing, potentially, they might think about other configurations than what's been proposed.
Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Commissioner Erickson?
My recollection of why they said they didn't have cellars was because they have parking on the ground floor, and that was the reason they didn't have cellars. Most of the times, we require cellars, they're single-family homes, usually, where you don't have parking on the floor above the cellar. So, that to me was not an economic issue, that was a practical issue. I suppose you could always say, "Why don't they have underground parking?" You could say anything, but the reason they said they didn't have cellars was because of the parking.
I believe they said that you could have parking in one portion and residential in another portion. I don't think the cellars would necessarily take the full.
If you put a two-car garage in a, on a house this width, it would be interesting to see how that would pencil out.
And they're proposing some interesting things, like tandem parking and others.
I'm sorry, sir, the public comment is closed. We cannot hear from members of the audience, please respect us up here. Thank you. Commissioner Erick, I'm going to ask you to leave if you're going to continue to interrupt us. Thank you. Commissioner Erickson? Did you have a comment?
No. Commissioner O'Donnell, just, I was, my understanding, it was a design issue, it wasn't an economic issue. That was my recollection of the testimony from the applicant with respect to, I mean, it'd have to take, I mean, you could hypothetically do it, but it would take a large, a more significant design change than some simple design. So, they have to redesign it, which is fine. And, my other recollection, or my other conclusion from their testimony, and I don't know whether this was my own analysis of what they said, or that they said, that I don't remember that, is that it would be challenging, and because I've got to create a larger unit in order to get from, in order to make, not split the living areas. And so, if I do that, if I create larger units, then it might not be possible for me to meet the 20 units per acre requirement. So, it would seem like to me, one would need to be sure one could do that with cellar, with a cellar design issue. So, it's not clear that one, that that presents a solution which would not be incompatible with the 20 units per acre.
All right, further comments, questions, evaluation on the housing section of the analysis? Commissioner Hudes?
I wanted to have a little more discussion about the view aspect of the housing, and how, in the sense that the way the housing is oriented, in my opinion, is that it blocks the views rather than embraces the views. And while I understand that some of the language about that is in the vision statement, there's also, and I'm kind of scrambling to look for it, but there are also some standards, I believe, and policies about views that go beyond the vision statement. And, my concern is that the current street grid pattern, the way it's oriented, prevents views from occurring from the pedestrian paseos and the parks and things like that. And so, I have a hard time understanding how the layout, the site layout, meets the objective standards in the plan there. And in fact, in, as I said, I think that you could not find a place where hillside, of that size, where hillside views would be as obstructed as the way that they've laid that out currently. So, that troubles me.
Any other comments on the views? See none? We can move to Section B, which is traffic and additional environmental review. Commissioner O'Donnell, followed by Vice Chair Kane?
Just so we got our ground rules straight, my understanding is that once the EIR was approved, we have to accept the EIR as being correct, unless we find sufficient facts as you change to essentially attack the EIR. But to the extent that the EIR is complete, finished, and accepted, that EIR has traffic studies supporting it. So, the only testimony, the only evidence we have at the moment is the testimony that was presented tonight. To the extent that some of us, and I've been in this position before, scratches their head at the engineering reports, I don't know how we go around that, because I have heard no evidence which would contradict the traffic studies that were, are a part of the completed and adopted EIR. So, I just throw that out, because I don't know how we go around that, and maybe somebody can tell me how we do that.
I have Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hudes.
Mr. Morley, is it correct that the traffic study was done in 2013?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So, if I made the argument that I think there's been substantial changes in the traffic since that time, would that be a viable argument, that there's significant changes out there? And if it was a viable argument, would I be jeopardizing the town insofar as the streamlining requirements? You know, it's going to take some time to do another traffic study, if other traffic study is warranted. To me, that's a tactic. What does that do to the strategy of putting us in a situation of liability?
So, it's not a substantial change that's out there, that's occurring? It's a substantial change from the project that was evaluated to now. So, if they had come in with a substantial change in the project and said, "I want to build 500 homes, I want to build a different project than when it's analyzed," that's a substantial change that you're looking at between the project.
But that's a lawful.
It's not substantial change.
That's a lawful definition. That the substantial change has to be caused by them?
The baseline is set.
Because there's a heck of a substantial change out there.
There's, that's not, that's not a reason to do another study.
Okay.
Commissioner Hudes?
And this may be more for the traffic engineer, but I understand that these things need to be built on projections, and projections based on projects that are in play, and then further projections are done for the new office, or the new development over the baseline. My question is, when do you stop building projections on top of projections when you have real data? And, you know, at what point is it, do we say, "Okay, there's been a lot that's happened, and that potentially we ought to look at actual data at this point to see whether the base projections are valid or not?"
So, there's, I think, several layers to the conversation, to the question. The initial analysis to the traffic study... The initial analysis through the traffic study, through SEQA, identified with the size of the project, what the impacts were going to be, what the traffic levels were going to be. That all fell into the specific plan and was identified there and approved through the, as the specific plan was approved. That SEQA, that SEQA and that traffic study's been accepted at this point by the town. Subsequently, with the Phase One application, which I think is what we're looking at now, there's additional analysis that the traffic consultant completed that looked to compare the Phase One, the Phase One project with the previously approved specific plan project. And the finding there was that this Phase One falls within the scope of what was identified in the specific plan. And so as such, the further analysis isn't necessary, and the traffic is less than what was envisioned through the specific plan. It's important to note that with any development project, you are bringing additional traffic. I mean, I don't think anybody would dispute that. The goal of the study is to identify the mitigation measures and what you can do to accommodate that traffic so that the impacts are mitigated to the extent that's set forward in our code. And that's all straightforward. The difficulty with the traffic, I think, from a non-engineering perspective like me and you, is that it seems like there's an impact and that the traffic's worse out there. The numbers actually show something slightly different, and the projections are used to get there. So it's a difficult thing to wrestle with. One of the things about engineering is it's pretty matter-of-fact, right? You follow the process. It gives you, we have the standards set forward, and if you comply with the standards, then by definition, it's compliant.
Well, but really, my question is, the basis on which you make assumptions, and I appreciate the rigor of the analysis that's gone into all of the traffic studies, but it's only as good as the assumptions. And I, you know, I looked at the community input, because those folks drive, and traffic was the number-one issue. It was not schools, as has been stated earlier. It was cited by somewhere around 356 out of the 500 communications that we received. And that includes last night as well. I did that, I updated it tonight. And so I think, you know, that coupled with the fact that five of the six studies, those five of the six development projects that were used, we actually have the opportunity to get actual data for. Correct?
Yeah, some of those projects have been completed and are online.
Five of the six have been completed.
Yeah. I'm sure that number is correct, yes. This particular project needs to mitigate the impact from this project and not from the other projects. Those other projects are responsible for their mitigation. So assuming that there's a baseline there that grills with the project, this project should have identified what the impacts are there.
Vice Chair Kane, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
I'm just sort of playing with you. Did you just say that the other projects didn't provide adequate mitigation?
I did not.
Okay. Well, why is, why does it not seem like it was mitigated?
So there's mitigation that goes, every project identifies what their impact is going to be, and they have associated list of projects that they need to address with that particular project. There are times when an entity can find that those impacts cannot be mitigated, and that could be the case in some of the projects. I don't know what the specific mitigation measures were associated with these projects. I'll say that the specific plan identifies and makes the North Forty project responsible for a significant amount of that mitigation, even to the extent that it is above and beyond what the impact of the North Forty project is.
I have Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Hudes, and then back to Vice Chair Kane.
So I wanted to ask exactly about where you're going. You know, the applicant stated that the $10 million that they're spending was not a required mitigation from the, well, I mean, it actually is in the air, but it was something that was in the CIP already. Could you help us understand kind of how that...
So there's...
Are they going above and beyond what they needed to do?
That's an easy question. The bike lane across 17 is above and beyond what is required with the project. So that, the answer to that is, yes, they are doing work that is above and beyond. The specific plan identifies elements of improvements that are necessary for the project, and it identifies who does those improvements. And that includes things like the multimodal path around the perimeter, and the bicycle paths, and the pedestrian paths through the interior of the project as examples. The project contributes to traffic along Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard, and those mitigation measures are required as a part of the project. And from staff's perspective, those are impacts that the project is creating and mitigating. As I said earlier, the project doesn't do all of the impact for those particular projects, but the project is responsible for the mitigation. In terms of where these projects are, the general plan has a list of projects that the town has identified as being necessary, and those are in the general plan. They're not necessarily in the CIP, although a couple of the projects are definitely in our, were or are in our five-year CIP. And we do continue to work towards completion of that list of projects. That list of projects is identified, and we typically address it through traffic impact fees. So the developments are responsible for paying an impact fee where they can't mitigate, and those impact fees go towards completing those projects. So the town is collecting funds from developments, and as those funds accrue, we're able to address some of the projects that have been identified through the general plan and other sources for growth.
So to take it one step further, if this project didn't happen, there would still be a need for these improvements, or there wouldn't?
Through the general plan, the town has identified that these will be areas that there will be improvements, and then it's just a matter of which project triggers those improvements and when that project comes along.
So this intersection was on the list in the general plan, is what you're saying?
It was.
Yeah, and you have to find an opportunity to address it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hudes?
There have been recent traffic problems due to some things that are different. It seems to me that there's a fundamental shift in what's causing traffic with regard to the Waze, Apple Maps, and whatever, so that the normal problem that we've had with beach traffic has become not just a little bit worse, but to the point where entire neighborhoods are gridlocked and a entrance to a freeway has been, has to be closed, which was probably never closed before. So would you characterize that traffic problem as a fundamental shift as compared to something that you could calculate based on whatever you looked at in 2012 or 2013?
So I've certainly experienced it over the last several weekends especially. And I don't know that there's anybody that...
Do you take the traffic engineers with you?
We spend a lot of weekends, the traffic engineer and I, out here observing traffic and trying to become educated on what the dynamics are, and it's certainly a very fluid situation. And the apps and the dynamics in the valley with the growth and the economy are all contributing factors and how they play off of each other is, I don't think, something that's identified. In terms of how that factors into a project like this, there's, as I think started, there are set methods for doing a traffic analysis. Those are accepted methods. They're a standard way of bringing a project through the SEQA process, and it's important that those methods are adhered to and followed. In a particular case, like a project with North Forty, where some of the mitigation measures are above and beyond, that's great. There are areas that there are improvements, and we heard about the delay time at particular intersections. There's also areas where there are degradations in that, and that's where our standard comes in, where the town accepts a D-level of service. And so that's what we're targeting, is a higher categorization at the D-level of service and not looking necessarily at the time delay at each particular movement or intersection.
So just as a follow-up, was anything in the TIA or the EIR, is there any place in there where that fundamental shift occurring from the Waze and Apple Maps problem that we've had in town, was that factored in any way into the EIR or the TIA?
It would not be, because those would not be trips that would be, so as I see the, for the weekend, Waze issue that we face, I think I see that as a regional issue where folks are coming from out of town through, trying to get from one point to the other. Los Gatos happens to be right in the middle of that. And so they're looking for the quickest, the most expeditious way through town. Those trips probably would not be generated through a North Forty. I think maybe in an aggregate, there'd be additional traffic from the North Forty, but those trips are, I think, above and beyond a different concept as a regional issue of folks trying to move about the community.
The effect of those things on Los Gatos Boulevard could be measured if we wanted to measure them, or I think we probably are measuring them now.
But if we're still on the SEQA discussion, I think there's a fundamental issue that we're not addressing, is that SEQA looks at a project and determines what the impacts are from that project. So let's assume, as Commissioner Kane was saying, that there's way more traffic out there because of Waze, because people are loving the beach more, because whatever reason the economy is doing so well. That's not the fault of this project. SEQA doesn't say it has to mitigate not only your project, but problems caused by Waze and problems caused by people wanting to go to the beach and because the economy is doing so well.
I understand.
It only impacts. So that's why I said, unless you can find the project has substantially changed, you can't redo SEQA because you now have more traffic than you had before.
Yeah, it seems to me that the baseline has fundamentally shifted.
Right, but it won't change the mitigations from the project.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have one quick question as a follow-up to that, and then what will probably be less controversial and maybe even easier questions for you to answer. So while I understand, when Commissioner Hudes had been talking about, you know, it would be better to have actual data than projection data, it would just seem to me, and this is a common sense thing, and let's see, I'm going to test this, it would be challenging to attribute specific increases or decreases in, or increases in traffic to particular projects. Is that a reasonable statement?
That is reasonable.
So I, so I, it wouldn't necessarily mean that if I had, if I had a certain increase after Project A, Project B, and Project C had been completed, A maybe Albright, that I could, that I could attribute an increase in traffic to that particular project. I mean, there wouldn't, I assume that's an impractical thing to do.
Generally impractical if you think about controlling for all other factors.
Right. Okay, okay, just as a clarification. So I have, what are, I think, are probably two easier, simpler questions. One is, what's the status of the multimodal path over Highway 17? What's the status of that?
So we refer to it as a bike lane over 17. So the requirements that town has, the town has placed on the Phase One project is an enhanced bike lane that goes across the overcrossing and provides that connectivity towards a creek trail. That is, that is a condition of the project.
That, I understand, that portion of it, is there, I mean, that will take work with Caltrans and so forth, you know, where those conversations with Caltrans are, et cetera? I mean, I assume it takes work with Caltrans since it's passing over a highway.
Absolutely takes work with Caltrans. The initial conversations with Caltrans have occurred. Caltrans has generally acknowledged that it's a desirable thing, and they're interested in participating. Once we have a project, then that would be sort of the trigger for the next step.
Okay, thank you. Then here's my next question. So the property owners of the existing medical office buildings that are located on the Boulevard, they've, that are within the specific plan area, they've given a letter to the town and to the commission that they would prefer not to have the median that's provided for as an off-site improvement completed, and so that it would continue to allow left turns going north into their property and left turns going north out of their property. Do you have some comment about their request and some recommendation about how we would take that request into consideration?
We've, I think engineering's looked at that extensively, and it's a challenging location. There's a lot of traffic going both directions in order to, and so it becomes a balance, like many things, is where are there sacrifices in order to ensure that the traffic continues to flow adequately and safety is considered within the process? I think from the town staff perspective, having a left turned into, or a left out of the development is not something that we're recommending, and it's something that we're not including, I think is not included in the project.
Commissioner Erickson?
So now I want to go back to the Boulevard, okay, and toward and going, my direction's south on the Boulevard, okay, approaching the Los Gatos intersection.
The Lark intersection.
I'm sorry, the Lark, sorry. You could read my mind, thanks. So there was, so both Commissioner Kane and I have raised questions about building 24 and 25 and that site, and while, and about whether or not one should look at that as being commercial property, et cetera. So I went to the site today, and if my walk-off is correct, the third lane, the so-called right turn lane, only starts at about one-third of the way from the south of it. So more, about two-thirds to three-fourths of it is where there are only two lanes, very similar to the properties that are adjacent to it. So, and part of the, I believe, part of the staff concern about not providing access from that direction had to do with crossing the right turn lane. One arguably could put a driveway on the very north part of that and not, and still be a considerable distance from where the right lane, where the third lane appears. So I'd like for you to comment on that, but I want to add one other thing. In the, on Lark Avenue going east, approaching Los Gatos Boulevard, there is a dedicated right turn lane from Highland Oaks all the way to Los Gatos Boulevard. There are three pieces of property that enter there. One, I believe it's the Water District edge that comes in there, and then Classic Car Wash, and then the office building that's on that site also has one of its exits onto that. So we are okay with it, with those crossing there into, or entering into right turn lane, but we're not okay with it on Los Gatos Boulevard when it's not even already, when it's not even, when it can be done where it's not even into the right turn lane. So, I mean, I'm just trying to understand your reluctance to allow site to the access, site access at that point.
So in discussions about this topic today, I think the applicant's recollection on previous conversations and staff's understanding of previous conversations may differ a little bit. However, if, generally, from an engineering perspective, we look with caution at providing access at busy intersections, and it's something that has to be done, you know, with open eyes. Looking at, and what I was trying to show on the screen was a queuing diagram that shows what the lanes are going to do, and it's not focusing real well, but it shows the queues in those lanes passing, passing those, what would be residential property. So there's some congestion there and adding additional cars there, especially if you're thinking that some of those may want to go across a turn lane and try and go straight, or even worse, go all the way across and turn left, that could provide some congestion. So that would be the concern. There's also some grade differences between the street level and the property level at that point that may provide some potential challenges. And then more importantly, I don't think staff has actually explored that, nor has the traffic engineering really had a detailed look at that. It's been something that's come up recently from our perspective, and if it's something that the applicant was going to consider, we need to do some further evaluation on it.
So would it be your staff recommendation for us not to pursue, it would be the best path, not to pursue site access? path not to pursue site access into that property?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further comments, uh, from commissioners having to do with traffic and additional environmental review before we move on to open space? Commissioner Hudes?
Um, I wanted to direct to the, uh, March thirtieth staff report, page twelve, um, and page thirteen, a couple of quick questions on that. Um, and wanted to see whether, um, there was support for, or some statements that were made in there. Let me get to it. Um, so the Lark Avenue, uh, Los Gatos Boulevard to State Route North, uh, seven, Route seventeen northbound ramps, um, the second bullet, um, will the tapering of lanes cause a new bottleneck? Um, or should that right turn lane just end there?
Uh, in, in what particular location are you, are you speaking? And maybe?
In the second, um, page twelve, uh, G bullet, Lark Avenue, uh, second sub-bullet. The last sentence, westbound lanes will taper from three lanes to four lanes, um, starting immediately, uh, from A Street. And the question is, you know, will the tapering of lanes cause a new bottleneck? Um, or should the right turn lane, uh, just end there as well?
So, and maybe Jesse, you can help me with this one?
So, uh, westbound lock, I'm sorry, Jesse Pugh, a town traffic engineer. So westbound Lark Avenue, uh, is proposed to, uh, provide three westbound lanes. And when you pass the A Street intersection, the, the curb lane or the number three lane will start opening up to another right turn lane. So there will be four lanes approaching the northbound seventeen intersection with two through lanes and two right turn lane. So you basically would taper from three lanes to four lanes between A Street and, uh, northbound seventeen ramp.
And then the right lane, as you come around onto Lark, um, that lane ends? Is that correct?
There are two, two lanes on, uh, on, on ramp as of the day. So the two right turn lane will feed into the two existing, uh, on ramp lanes.
So that, that right turn lane, uh, that turns on there, that lane ends, is that correct?
Oh, the, there is a right turn lane for entering A Street on the project site.
Right.
So there are actually three through lanes and one right turn lane.
Right. Will the ending of that lane cause a bottleneck?
No, no, will not. That right turn lane is a deceleration right turn lane for entering the project site.
There will not be cars trying to move over, um, to the other lane there?
No, the, uh...
Is there any separation of that lane?
Uh, this is a schematic drawing. It's, it's not showing the physical, uh, right turn lane, which would be a, a false lane.
Okay. Uh, just from the written description, it sounded like there was a possibility seeing this. It's, it's helped me to understand that it may not be the case. Um, I had one more, which was on page thirteen, uh, second bullet, Lark Avenue at Highland Oaks. Um, and this is, uh, you may be able to pull up the diagram here. Uh, my question was, will the queuing at this left turn be adequate given the anticipated, um, seasonal traffic, um, or additional traffic, um, after Phase Two, or will this need to be widened, um, again with the development of Phase Two?
Yes, this, uh, left turn, uh, storage capacity has been analyzed multiple times, including Phase One and the ultimate build-out. And this, um, this length of left turn is adequate for the ultimate build-out.
And have, have things like holiday traffic patterns been looked at, um, given that there's nothing to prevent someone from cutting through into the, um, traffic? I know we're not looking at a Phase Two application here, but, um, I don't know whether these improvements are meant to take us through that or not.
The, uh, the specific plan requires traffic, um, traffic calming measures, uh, along A Street for purpose of, uh, uh, discouraging casual traffic.
So you're confident that with holiday traffic, that lane will be big enough to accommodate and we won't have a backup onto, uh, Lark Avenue? It looks pretty short comparing to, you know, other shopping centers, um, where there's a permitted left turn. I just want to make sure that you really looked at that circumstance when that lane was designed?
Yes, um, it's, the, uh, the standard design guideline is providing a ninety-fifth percentile, uh, ninety, ninety-five percent, uh, queue length storage. And, and this meets that criteria.
And that's been looked at for the circumstance where there's a shopping center there and people are using that entrance to, to get there?
Yes, it takes into account of traffic calming measure to discourage casual traffic.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a, a, a two-part question. My guess is, the first part of the question that you will defer to Mr. Schultz. Um, so what, how much of the right-of-way on the east side of Los Gatos Boulevard does the town have under its control from Lark to Good Samaritan? And I, I, I believe that's less than a hundred percent. So, um, what's the, what's the process for acquiring the balance? And, and in your judgment, if in fact, the town council and without causing Mr. Morley a cardiac arrest with respect to his capital, his CIP budget, if the town council were to decide to help address traffic issues by doing, taking whatever measures it required to acquire the additional right-of-way and do the full build-out of Los Gatos Boulevard, what would that be, how would that help the traffic, general traffic in this area?
So I'll, I'll start and we'll fill in along the way as we need to. So the, the diagram that's here, although it wasn't intended for this purpose, does a pretty good job of showing, uh, the, the sawtoothed, uh, pattern along Los Gatos Boulevard where there is right-of-way already and then there are areas where there are not. So there are significant areas that are still need to be acquired. We've done no analysis on what that might be nor what it would cost. Um, in terms of, uh, capacity on Los Gatos Boulevard, the analysis, the traffic analysis shows that there's capacity along the Boulevard to, to carry the traffic that will be generated through the project.
Can you repeat what you just said?
Yeah, so with, in the, in the current design through the specific, what's identified through the specific plan, the, Los Gatos Boulevard has the capacity to carry the traffic that will be generated in the area. So there is no, um, degradation of service, um, along that area. It's been, been mitigated. The big, big, big concerns with traffic are at the intersections, especially signalized intersections. Uh, and you can see by the project, that's where the focus on the improvement, improvements are, is to, to carry through that. It's also why, for instance, where the, where the merge occurs on Los Gatos Boulevard, it's less important that it's emerged sort of midstream, um, and more important that we move, that the traffic is moved through the intersection, uh, to, by moving traffic through an intersection, you allow, you allow to, for lessening of green time at that particular movement, and that by definition allows for extension of green time elsewhere and improves the service level.
Okay, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
All right, commissioners, are we ready to move on to open space and the look and feel of Los Gatos? All right, Mr. Morley and Mr. Pugh, thank you very much for your, your help. I'm gonna combine these two together because they are interrelated and it's starting to move on to the eleventh hour of the evening and we still need to look at the different components of the application. So I will look to commissioners for their comments on open space and look and feel of Los Gatos. Commissioner Hanson?
Um, my, my comment on open space was, I, I, I didn't have a lot of problem with it. I mean, my, the issues I have are more related to other parts of the project than, than the open space. It, um, the look and feel, um, was another matter though. Um, I, I read and reread the specific plan and, and, um, although I could see pictures of things that look like were in the, um, the plan proposal, um, I, I was having trouble tying it to anything that I could think of in Los Gatos. And we don't have a development like this in Los Gatos. Um, and, and, and I know we have some townhouses that are thirty-five feet or so in height, but, um, but I was struggling with that, you know, and, and there's some language in the specific plan about it complementing what we have and, and going to a new place, but it, I, I've still left the, it, it didn't, I, I couldn't place it with anything else. And especially when you consider, this isn't really a neighborhood analysis thing, but if you looked at the, you know, the closest residential in Highland Oaks and then also across the street, um, from Los Gatos Boulevard, they're, you know, they're single-story houses and, um, so I, I, I was, I struggled with that. I didn't know, you know, it, it doesn't, it, it, it isn't clear in the specific plan that it doesn't comply, but it, you know, I was having, there were some pictures that, that, and there are some guidelines about how to vary the roof forms and the walls and, but I, I, it, it didn't look like anything else I knew of in Los Gatos. So.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, this is an area that to me is very difficult, gets very close to subjective standards. And so I didn't spend a lot of time on it. Um, but two things did occur to me that I, I want to mention and maybe get some reaction from, from other commissioners on, on. One of them is, um, the individual architectural styles. And if an individual architectural style can't be found anywhere in Los Gatos and that individual architecture style is used frequently in the project, such as a row house, um, then is it possible for us to even make a finding of fact that that architectural style is found, um, is, is consistent with the look and feel? And again, I'm trying to, you know, not say, just say, you know, can I, are there facts that can, um, lead me to conclude one way, you know, or another? Um, the other point on this is just the, I think as, um, Commissioner Hanson pointed out, the assembly of buildings in a grid pattern of this size, um, again, is that something that, um, is consistent from a factual basis with, um, Los Gatos? Can it even be found anywhere, um, uh, you know, that, that would allow us to make a finding of fact that it is? So I'm just kind of putting that out there. I'm not, uh, you know, advocating, um, that, that these are necessarily objective, but they are getting somewhat close to the line in, in my opinion about what's a fact. So.
I, I would agree with that. I found that the architecture was a departure from what we want as the rural history of the site or, or even architecture that I found throughout the town. It's, it's modern urban design. Any other commissioners? Uh, although I know the town architect, you know, put his approval on it, uh, but he's an independent consultant. Commissioner Hanson?
Um, just adding onto that, I, I, I also noted, and I have great respect for the town architect. I mean, and he seemed to, to bless this, and he did bless it. Uh, but I also remember during the public testimony yesterday, some of the people that participated in the survey, they talked, you know, had chosen the traditional and mission style, and I didn't see any of that in this proposal. So I, I kind of wonder what happened between then and now because, you know, this, you know, if, if I look at it, 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 a lot of it looks similar to things that you can see in Santana Row, maybe not as tall, but the look and feel of the buildings. So I, I feel like something kind of happened in the between. Um, but, uh, so that, I just wanted to add that.
Commissioner Erickson?
So architectural style from my perspective is only one piece of the look and feel. So what I'm gonna say next is really only applicable to architectural style. So, but what I'm trying to understand architectural style and how it's consistent with the look and feel of Los Gatos, I would suggest that Los Gatos has a rich collection of architectural styles that reflect the historical development of the town during different periods of time. That's, that's what we have in town. We don't have a single style. We don't have a dominant style. We have a mo, a rich collection of styles. That's what makes the place great from my perspective. As I came to appreciate when I served on the Historic Preservation Committee, when I evaluate a particular building or set of buildings, I need to do that in the context of the time period in which they were constructed. So if I were to use the historical neighborhoods of the downtown area as a standard by which to evaluate the, the South Kennedy Road, the Aventino Apartments, et cetera, I would not be using a proper kind of, kind of standard to judge them by. So, um, I need to, so I thought, well, okay, how do I then think about it and how do I, how do I pose the question to myself to understand whether a style would be? So the, the question for me is, is in this particular, is this architectural style that's being proposed, is it an appropriate contemporary architectural interpretation that captures the spirit and intent of the vision statement and the guiding principles of the North Forty specific plan? And in particular, is it respectful and captures the history and agriculture heritage of the site, um, such that it makes a positive contribution to the rich collection of architectural styles that the town has? And I'm not sure, so I understand the question and I feel not particularly prepared, because I'm not an architect, to answer the question. The only guidance that I have is, is the guidance which the consulting architect has provided and the Historic Preservation Committee has provided. And, and they would suggest that it's at least nodding in that direction. That doesn't necessarily convince me that it's making a positive contribution to the rich, to rich, to rich collection, but it also doesn't suggest to me that it is not consistent with the look and feel of the town. So it's a, so it's a, it's a, it's a question which I've kind of wondered about, contemplated about, um, that I don't know exactly how to answer. But I think the real question is, is it for me, is it a, is it a, an appropriate contemporary, because these are being built now. They're not being built in the nineteen fifties. They're not being built in the eighteen hundreds. They're being built now. So how is it, how do we think about it as a contemporary interpretation of an architectural, an architectural interpretation? an architectural interpretation now?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I also sit on the Historical Preservation Committee, did come before us and ultimately was approved. The town architect also approved it. I believe the, I believe this guideline is subjective. If there's anything that's subjective, I think it's, this discussion illustrates it. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, almost is the way this conversation is going. But if this is not subjective, then we don't have to worry about subjective because nothing is subjective. That'll simplify what we're doing. But if it is subjective, then, then we don't get to deny a project based on a subjective standard. It's not a standard guideline.
Understood.
So the whole discussion, you know, I've let you go on a while, but I'll draw you back to my first one. We need you to connect any of your statements with actual, whether it's objective or any standards. I haven't heard anybody say, and I'll give the seller example, you know, they should have sellers. Well, tell me where in the specific plan it says they should have sellers. Because if you can't find that, then you're not going to be able to connect that and require sellers. Same for, the comment is, is, well, I don't see row houses anymore, so it doesn't have the look and feel. Our specific plan specifically says they can do row houses. So you're not going to be able to connect the dots there. So that's what I'd like to see, is you connecting to the dots as to the standards that are in our specific plan, if you would like to see changes made.
All right. Vice Chair Kane?
I can't do that, and that's regrettable. The specific plan is telling me, the town architect is telling me, the staff report is telling me that it has the look and feel. And I'd rather go to the Supreme Court definition of pornography. I don't know what it is, but I know when I look at it. It doesn't look like anything that I've seen in Los Gatos. So how can that have a look and a feel? It can have a look and a feel because three authorities say so, and I can't connect the dots between the subjectivity and data, but it doesn't look like anything I've seen in town. If there's disagreement with that, tell me where there's something comparable and I'll stand corrected. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm saying the first time I saw that line to preserve the look and feel of Los Gatos, I just went, why did they put that on there? Just do what you want. Because it doesn't. And yet, three authorities says it's acceptable. So I'm answering your question. I can't do it, and that's regrettable. That's my opinion.
All right. We've heard Vice Chair Kane's opinion, and unless we have any other comments or questions on those two items, we can move on to the application for which we have five components to work through. And we're going to be approaching 11:30 before we know it. Pardon me?
Why don't we see where we are? Because we can always make a motion to extend at 11:25.
I understand that. I'm trying to move the conversation along.
I agree.
Is what I'm trying to do, especially since two of you won't be here on July 20th. So back to the open space and look and feel. Are we done discussing that for now? Is there any further? Okay. All right. Let's get our applications out, if we don't mind.
So maybe I could comment on that, because I had suggested that we go through this at this point. And I've found, I've been able to weave in my individual comments on there, with the exception of a few questions, that I don't feel the need to go through it, at least personally to do that.
Okay.
Because I've been moving stuff from the plan, page by page, to the four topics as we've been going through this. So I have, I have a few questions, but they're almost check-the-box kind of questions that I want to make sure that we're okay on. And I don't know if you, that would be okay for me to go through those?
Absolutely.
Just try to get a quick answer. The, there's a section called illustrative plan, and 3.13 uses that term and a number of others do in the plan. Is that an acceptable submission for a project approval to use illustrative rather than to use actual elevations and things of that sort?
And you said 3.12?
3.13. And it's just, it appears throughout. There's a lot of these illustrative elevations.
So I think if you look, there's illustrative and then there's also the technical elevation. So both are provided.
They're both?
Correct.
So the technical is required and the illustrative is nice to have, maybe?
Correct.
Okay. The, I want to just quickly, 315A, which deals with the height, and I want to make sure that we understand this. What elements are permitted to go beyond height limits of 35 feet and 45 feet, per the, per the general plan?
So I will pull out the specific plan. I'll have to pull out those exact areas, but it's...
I'm sorry, I meant specific.
Right. So I'll pull those, I'll pull those areas specifically out, but it's roof pitches over, I want to say, six and 12, and then some other architectural features. And I will pull out the exact language as we go through the further deliberations.
Okay. My understanding is that there are, those elements are not permitted, except that they are asking for a waiver in order to have those?
Well, I'm sorry. I thought you meant just in general for those, but they are requesting a waiver, and so those limits can be extended above.
Okay. This was about the square footage, 321, the square footage of the senior affordable units. We had testimony from the applicant that 580 square feet is fine. I think they said maybe 600 or something, but I wonder if staff or anyone has verified as to whether 580 square feet is really adequate? And is it an average size of senior affordable housing in the Bay Area? It looks pretty small. It's, you know, a little bigger than a typical garage.
So staff does not do that analysis? We are, we have technical experts from the applicant's side, but we do not regulate what size of any of the units, regardless of it's senior or any of the other types of units, how those compare to other developments, either in town or throughout the Bay Area.
Right. So I'm just asking, and the reason I'm asking is that I think this relates back to unmet need, and I think there needs to be an unmet need for a dwelling unit of this size. And so I was hoping that staff would verify. We didn't only have to take the word of the applicant, that that's adequate, given that it looks like a pretty small number to me.
And I think that things like that, those are things that, as, you know, if, not if, when the planning commission makes a recommendation and it moves forward, those are topics that we will be prepared to handle as well with the council.
Sorry.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make a comment that when we were on the Housing Element Advisory Board, I asked Laurel Privati for an introduction to Eden Housing, because I wanted to get more information. And I, so I spoke with the president of Eden Housing and, and we did actually discuss this, and then this type, size of unit is very typical for the kind of projects that they do, and they do a lot of these affordable housing. I think it was testified last night, they, you know, and typically over commercial. So I took comfort in that. I don't know if that's helpful, but that didn't come from the applicant. Well, Eden Housing is part of the applicant, but they're the ones that, that are going to own it and manage it.
Okay. And along that vein of trying to sort of trust and verify, on 322, there's, there was a comment from the, from the consulting architect about providing below-grade parking for the senior affordable. Has that been provided and is there a security gate to segregate the senior affordable from the other parking area?
So there is an underground portion of in the parking garage. I do, that is the lower level, obviously. I believe the senior parking is above in one of the upper levels, and I will have to check on the security of that, whether or not it's gated.
Okay. And then along lines, again, we had testimony from the applicant that a half space, one half space per unit is adequate. Has staff looked into that and do we believe that that's the case?
That meets the requirements of the specific plan.
Okay. And then 6.3. The lot coverage and, why is that not here? Get the wrong number there? There's a lot coverage chart, and maybe I have the wrong number. Should be, there's two 6.3s. So the first...
6.5?
No, 6.3, the one that says Phase 1 Lot Coverage Diagram.
Yes.
That, that is lot coverage that is consistent with the density, et cetera. How does that lot coverage relate to other similar developments in town?
So the lot coverage requirement for the specific plan is a maximum of 50%. The lot coverage for the proposed Phase 1 application is 31.4%. So they comply with the requirement of the specific plan.
Okay. This one is a question about open space and setbacks on 6.4. There are setbacks, there are setbacks that are also open space, correct?
Correct.
Particularly the orchard along Lark. Are setbacks normally considered open space?
The specific plan requires those areas to be landscape buffered. And so the perimeter area was considered to be that.
And is that considered, normally considered that in other developments? Or is that something that's unique?
Well, it's not unique because we don't have an open space component for commercial that's a requirement of any other development.
Okay. But what about for residential?
So for residential, you just have the front setback, which typically is landscaped. But there's no open space requirement.
Okay. I've seen it in some other zoning language elsewhere, so.
Correct. We don't have an open space requirement.
Okay. That's the last of mine.
Any further questions, comments from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
3.21.
Mr. Paulson, is it, is it relevant and/or within my purview to ask, what are the anticipated rent? None of these can be purchased, the seniors, they're all rentals, right?
These are all proposed to be rentals.
And they're supposed to be below market?
They will be.
So do we know what that really is? What would I, what would I pay for 580 square feet? Do we know?
It's based on the income of the individual, and then there is a percentage of that, depending on the income level. And so there's a formula which generally changes every, I believe every year HUD puts out standards, and so rents are, follow that metric, but we don't have a number.
We can't ballpark this.
I believe that the applicant, in their testimony, said 600 to 1,000.
For this one?
If I, if I remember correctly.
Indeed, it would be affordable, even though it's Los Gatos. Because sometimes we do BMPs that can't be afforded anyway. But this is, this is really a low rent for Los Gatos.
Correct.
And I think the BMP is all spelled out in the March 30 staff report. I've seen the complexity of it before, but I couldn't translate it to a number, and that seems to be a decent number. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions, entertain a motion? Commissioners?
Maybe I'll start some discussion that someone could challenge or add on to, but I would move to deny the application based on findings that the, there, the project does not address identified unmet needs, that the, the views are not addressed by the layout of the, of the site as required in not only the vision statement, but in policy, OS Policy 01, Page 2-11, the commercial design guidelines, Page 3-2, and additional requirements for views on 3.26BI, Page 3-9, where there are requirements for views. And that's where I would just get things started.
We have a motion to deny. Commissioner Erickson has his hand up. Did I see you have a hand up? No? Okay. Do we have a second or Commissioner O'Donnell has a question?
Question. There are several matters before us. That's a motion. Does it deal with the vesting subdivision map or any? Isn't clear to me what the motion speaks to.
Sure. That was, that was actually a question that we asked, I think, before, and I'd looked for some advice from staff about how far we have to go if denial is each of the, each of the requirements.
So I think you need to look at the, the vesting tentative map has specific findings. You would have to make one of those specific findings to recommend denial of that. However, without the architectural site approval, and I'd looked at the town attorney, if you're recommending denial of architectural site approval, that's specifically tied to the vesting tentative map. So the recommendation could be for denial for both of them, but again, we want to make sure we're tying to the findings and providing the link to those objective standards.
Okay. So can you repeat the motion and see if we get a second?
So there's several parts to this. The, can, can, is it, is it adequate to make a recommendation to deny the ARC and site application? Which is described in S13090 and the vesting tentative map, M13014? And to, to not move forward to the density bonus, the waiver of development standards and the subdivision, or do they need to be considered together?
No. If you make the determination that the vesting tentative map and the architectural and site is denied based on specific standards in the specific plan, you don't have to get to the, the bonus issue and the other denials at this particular time.
So to clarify Commissioner O'Donnell's question, my motion would be to deny the ARC and site application as 3113090 and the vesting tentative map, M13014.
Based on the policies that you stated a few minutes ago, and that's a recommendation of denial to council, not an actual denial.
Commissioner Erickson, you kind of had your hand up or you don't? No?
Ultimately, if the, if the motion has a second and stands as a motion, I have a question of clarification, but I'll hold the question of clarification in case, till there's such second.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Erickson, we're ready for discussion.
Okay. So I would like either Mr. Hudes or the staff to repeat the basis for the denial, because it went through fast and it seemed to me that's a, it's critical to understand what the basis of the denial is. the basis of the denial is before one can vote on it.
So I'd be happy to expand first, maybe. The basis for denial is that it is not consistent with the North 40 specific plan with regard to, the views are not, not consistent with regard to Policy 01, page 2-11, the Commercial Design Guidelines, page 3-2, and Section 3-2-6 dot B.I., page 3-9. That addresses the requirement for, for views. And also with regard to the unmet needs for senior housing as described in 2.4 for residential development. And those are the two that I included in my motion.
Commissioner Erickson.
Then I have a question for staff. So part of the motion is based on not meeting unmet needs. So can you help me understand the language? Is the obligation of an applicant to meet all of the unmet needs of the town? Or in fact, if they meet some unmet needs, is that adequate?
I will give, I will start, and then if the town attorney has anything additional, there's nothing in the specific plan that requires an applicant to meet all of the unmet needs of the town.
So then hypothetically, I'm not saying that this would be a case, so that if in fact one met, one unmet need of the town, that would be sufficient, given the language of the specific plan, to, to be consistent with meeting the unmet needs of the town?
It could be, and that would be determination made by each individual planning commissioner. You as individual commissioners will decide whether or not it meets the unmet needs requirement that Mr. Hudes has pointed out. And so whether that's, I've told you, it doesn't need to meet all of them, but if it does meet one or more of them, then it's clearly meeting unmet needs. There's no threshold there that's an objective standard that says you have to meet these certain objective unmet needs.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I will not be supporting the motion, but the good news is, we're not making a decision. The, the town council is. What I'm concerned with is that if there's ever been a project we've worked on that doesn't have as strong a possibility of litigation as this one does, I don't recall it. But I'm sure the council will do a somewhat different job in analyzing what they're doing than we have, given it. As I understand it, the town attorney is in fact getting some additional legal advice, and that will, I assume, be helpful. So I, I can respect the motion and the reason for the motion, but I'm very, I, I don't think this motion will be of much assistance to the town council, but that may be okay, too. And I'm just very glad we don't have the ultimate responsibility.
Vice Chair Kane.
Commissioner O'Donnell, was there something you wanted to put in its place?
Not that would be supported.
All right. I, I will add a comment in that the intensity of this project is out of character for the town. And when I look at the specific plan, it relies on hypothetical data in the glossary to characterize the intensity of unit sizes. That's hypothetical data. Real data provided by the town on page 6 of the staff report provides documentation that high-density housing in Los Gadas typically ranges from 516 square feet to 1484 square feet. So that is powerful to me. Scaling it back with the intensity could have the effect of providing more open space, greater building articulation, possibly reduced building height, possibly reduced building footprint, quite possibly greater affordability in unmet housing needs, and it would protect hillside views. So I would be supporting the motion. Any further discussion? All right. We are coming up to 11:30, so I will call the question very quickly. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. So it fails. We have a tie vote. And so Vice Chair Kane. All right. So I need a motion to go past 11:30. It's 11:30.
So moved.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell made the motion, seconded by? I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Vice Chair Kane.
So I didn't support the motion because I felt that unless one watched the tape, much of what we said and were concerned about was not reflected in the motion. I thought the motion would be like 14 points long. Am I, am I off base? One of the things I'd like in the motion is a reflection of, whereas I appreciated the economic analyst's report, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to have a dialogue with those merchants who are threatened to possibly, or think they're possibly threatening to go out of business. I'd like that in the motion as opposed to just in the film. And other things that we, we talked about that were of concern. So how detailed does this have to be?
Well, I, I think we need another motion, and so typically, well, I shouldn't say typically. There have been instances where there's a motion and a second, and folks want to have things added to it, so they request that of the maker and the seconder. But at this point, we will need a new motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just to verify, if we have a tie vote, it, it doesn't mean that we, it can't go on to the council who will make the ultimate decision. It will just fail. Is that correct?
Correct. But I'm sure council would like you to at least deliberate a little bit further to see if a motion could get a majority.
Well, the reason I, the reason I say that-
If, after a period of time, like deliberations for a jury.
Yeah. And that's fine. It's just that Mr. Kane's point is well-taken. That is, if anyone reviews the record, they'll see a lot of things that were said, and I'm not altogether sure necessarily that have to be in the motion.
Has to be in a motion. Correct.
But so many things were said, both by the citizens and by us, that I don't care how long the motion is, it's not going to get the full flavor of people's concerns and why the majority of this planning commission has made the motion they have. That is not to say we shouldn't go ahead and try, but I just want everybody to feel comfortable with what will happen.
To the maker of the form of motion, if you could repeat your motion and add that we're serious about the full flavor of whatever Commissioner O'Donnell just said. You've, you've been talking for a very long time, and you've done a great deal of research. And I thought the motion was almost myopic in terms of the stated concerns that you've had, the other commissioners, and I didn't know if that should, you know, if they're just going to read the executive summary or listen to these two days of deliberation, not to mention the 610 letters we've received.
So I will just offer, before Mr. Hudes jumps in, that the verminiments will be prepared for both the meetings, and they'll be submitted to the council. Everything that the planning commission has received will also be forwarded to the council, so they'll receive all of that information, plus any additional information that the public wishes to submit prior to the council meeting.
And consider remaking your motion, and I'll put more faith in the process.
And I think what council really is going to be looking for, though, is those standards that you felt it was not in compliance, like Commissioner Hudes mentioned in, in the open space. So whether they're subjective or objective, I left that open to any standard. So if there's any other standards you want to point out in not only that motion or any that add, I think that would greatly help the recommendations to council.
Commissioner Hanson.
I, I had a question and a comment. I thought your comments, Chair Badami, were good, very good about the, the intensity. Did you have a specific section of the specific plan that we could refer to on the intensity?
I was dealing with unit sizes, and that's part of the unspecificity of the specific plan. So all I could go off of was the hypothetical data that was provided in the glossary rather than real data about what type of intensity with square footages we might be looking for, for units of this size with this particular density with this acreage. I felt it was out of character for what we have in Los Gadas with similar parcels.
Would that be an element of a potential motion?
That was the element of why I supported the motion. I added it.
We don't have a motion now. I just want to put it in there.
You can add things to the motion.
All right.
If the maker is willing to do that.
Put the motion.
Yeah, but you can, what I'm suggesting is, rather than go through that motion again, you can say the same motion, or you don't have to repeat it, and then you can make amendments to that, or ask for amendments to it. I just try to save some time.
All right. I'd be happy to make an amendment. If you want to start that motion again, then we'll hopefully get the second, and I will make my amendment with the discussion that I had, why I supported the motion.
Right. I'm happy to do that. I wanted to explore one additional area, and that's the economic impact, and to see whether there were some things that Commissioner Kane might want to suggest as grounds for denial in, with regard to, with regard to that area.
It goes to the mission statement, or some of the lead statements in the North 40 specific plan, having a concern or preservation for the downtown district. I don't know what the reference is right now. But that's my concern, is that there's not enough concern spelled out where it could be, you know, a regulated part. And I just want to protect the downtown.
So let me ask then, the, there was an inclusion of an economic report here. How does that tie back to the specific plan? That was a required document, correct?
Correct.
And where, where is that cited? If I could, because I don't have the number.
I do.
I believe it's on page 24, but let me just check here.
If we're looking for this document, it's exhibit 9.
Right.
He's looking for the requirement in the specific plan.
Okay.
I mean, I would, could you point me to the requirement?
I am, I'm attempting to get there.
Okay. I know that's-
I'm sorry. It's on, on page 2.6. It's 2.4.2, Commercial Uses. Projects proposing new commercial square footage must present the proposal to the CDAC.
Right. So I would suggest that the economic impact study was flawed in that it did not consider the true circumstances of the downtown, where the downtown has conditional use permits. I believe the, the consultant stated that he did not recognize or consider that, and also the, or analyze the differences in the parking ability in the downtown as well. So I would maybe suggest that might be a way to, to address this economic issue, and that I think, in my opinion, the report is flawed.
So if, if we could get a motion on the floor, and as I understand, the motion right now would be based on three that I've heard, so if we get a motion that is based on the open space and the standards that you mentioned in your first motion, it's based on the statements made by Chair Badami about the intensity of development, and that it does not meet the standard set forth in the glossary for square footage requirements. And then the third one is the economic study. So is there a motion that we could put on the floor for that and get a second? Then you can add anything else to it.
Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to make a comment relative to Commissioner Hudes redoing the motion. There was a question in, in the discussions of the original motion about the unmet needs. In addition to Section 2.4, where it describes that the development shall be focused on the unmet needs, Appendix C clearly outlines that there's two major populations for unmet needs. Now, it would be up for the council to determine whether or not meeting the needs of millennials would be sufficient, but it clearly spells out in the second page of Appendix C that baby boomers are an unmet need of the town. It's documented in the specific plan, and it documents what their requirements are, stack flats, elimination of stairs, and such. So that was the basis for, by bringing it up to begin with. And so I, if we could add that to the evidence.
As long as we get a motion and a second.
One second. Just want to get it all. Commissioner Badami, which section were you citing, please?
Mine had more to do with the general plan as it relates to the specific plan, and that was with intensity relating to the character of the town, and that the project as proposed is too intense, and that reducing the intensity, and again, the intensity is not spelled out in the specific plan. There's a chart, that's a hypothetical chart in the glossary that talks about unit sizes that is not based on real data. Whereas the town, on page 6 of the staff report, has provided documentation that high-density housing in Los Gadas, with this particular 20 units to the acre, typically ranges from 516 square feet to 1484 square feet. So this is a departure, it's out of the character for what we have in Los Gadas. We've got units that range at least almost 2,000 square feet. So I'd like to see the intensity scaled back, and doing so would provide more open space, greater building articulation, reduced building height, reduced building footprint, greater affordability for unmet housing needs, and protect hillside views.
And the, and the chart she's talking about is the conceptual model of residential sizes, which is on 614? 614?
Thank you for providing the page. Yes. Vice Chair Kane.
In our Residential Design Guidelines, Commissioner Hudes, there's a requirement for excellence in design. And what I can find similar to that in the, in the North 40 specific plan is page 3.1, Design Guidelines under Architecture and Site, talking about complementing the existing character of Los Gadas. And under Delta George 6, Architecture, produce high-quality, authentic design, et cetera, et cetera. I have concerns about those two units.
24 and 25.
24 and 25. They really seem crammed in there, and I wish, I wish they were somewhere else, and certainly not on Los Gadas Boulevard. So that's my citing for-
Page number on to that.
Article 3.1.
I wanted to come back to Commissioner Badami's concern and the intensity concern, and I wanted to ask the attorney about whether that is something that he would support with regard to the, the requirements that we have for certain kind of densi, I'm sorry, certain kind of density of 20 units per acre. Are those consistent?
I don't know. I'm just, I wouldn't know if it's even consistent with still being able to meet the density requirement of 20 per acre. Is that your question?
Correct.
And I don't know that. I'm assuming when we went through that with the specific plan that it would meet it, but I don't know that for a fact. But certainly you can use that as one of your, at least you've, at least you've tied it to your reasoning, to something within the specific plan, which is where I'm trying to guide the discussion.
So I'm, I'm a little concerned because this is a, an example with a hypothetical example rather than, rather than a requirement. I believe that, that's what this table says, so I'm a little concerned. Maybe we could have a little more discussion about, about that.
Well, it's not specified in the, in the specific plan what square footage units should or shouldn't be. So it's, it's left open-ended. So when I look at what's characteristic of Los Gadas, I, I don't want to use a hypothetical chart. I don't know who made up those numbers or where they came from. I want to look at hardcore data, what is more typical for Los Gadas for this type of density. of density. And what I see, what's been provided to me by staff is on page six of the staff report, and they give five examples of similar types of development at 20 units per acre in town. Aventino Apartments at 516 square feet to 1,484. Baytree Apartments, 782 square feet to 1,114. Riviera Terrace, 639 square feet to 1,035. Laura Drive, 800 square feet to 1,000 square feet. So if we're going to be cramming a lot of units in there, I want them smaller in size to reduce the intensity, to have the effect that we want for a better project for Los Gattis, that gave us all those extra benefits of open space, building articulation, reduced building height, et cetera. I've gone through the list. But that's what's more characteristic of town, of Los Gattis, that I would like to see, that celebrates our town. And, does that help?
It does. I may ask you to amend my motion with that specific part. So I'm going to, let me try again.
Are you going to make it now?
Yeah. So I'm going to start with the previous motion, which addressed not, so the project is not in compliance with the applicable goals and objectives of the general plan. The project is not in compliance with the North Forty specific plan with regard to views, not consistent as the policies that I cited earlier, the pages that I've cited earlier with regard to that, and with regard to the unmet needs for senior housing, as in Section 2.4, not addressed. And then I would include the, the high, the quality of architecture as expressed in 3-1, 3.1, the, in particular, two units, 24 and 25, not in compliance with that. And then I would also cite the failure to meet the economic report in 2-4, I believe 2-4. The application submittal must include an economic impact study to assess economic competitiveness, and that that study is flawed, as it didn't consider certain elements of the downtown, including the need for restriction, the restrictions in downtown that include conditional use permit and parking restrictions were not considered in the preparation of that report. So that's where I am. I would maybe stop there, see if I can get a second, and then if Commissioner Badami would like to add something about intensity, I wanted to make sure to get that language correct. So I think we'd need to get a second before we could do that.
All right. Vice Chair Kane and Commissioner Hanson seconded at the same time, so I don't know who to give their credit to. All right. Commissioner Hanson said she seconded first time around. All right. So I would ask the maker of the motion if they would add that the specific plan envisions lower-intensity residential for the Lark District. To me, lower-intensity residential equates to smaller square footage in unit size. Based upon that, I am referring to what I think is real data as to what's characteristic of Los Gattis for low-intensity residential, and that would be the information provided on page six of the staff report with the examples given of similar development in Los Gattis. So the intensity, the square footage of the unit sizes need to be less intense. Would the maker of the motion add that?
I would add that.
All right. Does the second accept that?
Yes.
All right. I, any further discussion? Commissioner Erickson.
So I have a request of the chair. So I would like for the staff to outline in writing all of the bases, because it's, this is complicated. It's both complicated and important to outline them, put them up on the screen, and give us a five-to-10-minute break to kind of figure out whether or not we could, because I've lost, I've lost track of them, to give us at least five minutes or so to kind of come to grips with whether or not they provide an adequate basis for supporting the motion or not. That's a request.
All right. I, I would like to honor that request. It seems reasonable.
At least 10 minutes.
10 minutes. We will take a 10-minute break. All right, commissioners, per Commissioner Erickson's request, we have the motion on the overhead.
And so I will go ahead and read it, and then we would be looking for confirmation from Commissioner Hudes and Commissioner Hanson as to whether or not that captures the essence of their motion. So the motion is to recommend denial of the Architecture and Site Application and Investing Tentative Map application to the Town Council based on findings that the project is not consistent with the general plan and North Forty specific plan, because it doesn't meet the unmet needs, as it doesn't address unmet housing needs for senior housing as outlined in section 2.4 and Appendix C of the North Forty specific plan. In relation to views, as it doesn't incorporate views adequately in the layouts as called out in Open Space Policy 1, and also as related to Design Guidelines 3.2.1. Point D. And then relationship to the economic study from section 2.4.2 of the specific plan, that the study was flawed because it did not consider downtown CUP requirements and parking requirements. In relationship to intensity, that the North Forty specific plan envisions lower intensity residential in the Lark District, and the units should be smaller, typical of the examples cited in the Planning Commission staff report for July 12th on page six, which stated examples of other developments in town. And then from the Design Guidelines, Policy DG6, that buildings 24 and 25 do not comply with this policy.
Commissioner Hudes.
I think under views, there was an additional item, which is very long, 3.2.6.e.i. on page 3-9. on page 3-9. Special care shall be taken to avoid obstructing views to the surrounding hills.
Are all the commissioners able to read the material that's on the overhead? Yes? All right. We have a motion on the table and a second. So I am back to any further discussion before I call the question. Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a comment. I wondered what we should do with the discussion that we had at the beginning about distributing the units differently, you know, for any proposal that would go forward. And it could pertain to view and intensity. I don't think it's a grounds for denial, but it's, I felt like, I mean, certainly the council will get a transcript of our discussion, but I thought it was important that we include that in our recommendations, that any proposal, and maybe you guys don't agree with that, that that should be part of our recommendation, but I'm going to throw that out there.
All right. Commissioner Hudes.
I just want to add to that, that tied in with my thinking about views in that site configuration could be adjusted from the application because there are, there is some ability to move units in, you know, within the site and within the application area as well as within the district. So that's how it tied in. It's not an additional item. It's just my thinking behind why it's okay to look at the views as, as an issue, you know, as well.
Vice Chair Kane.
I think it's an adequate representation of what we said. It could help with the motion being voted on. I just prefer that we know that the actual text of the motion, as from the verbatim minutes, is what in fact we said, just in case there's some bad grammar up there or whatever. What we said is what we said.
All right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hudes.
Just since I'm somewhat new to this, is it possible to support, to vote and for and support the motion without supporting every one of the, the points that are on there?
So your motion would be taken as a whole, and whether you, you know, for the motion because it's all parts, but you certainly can put on the record if, say, for example, you're going to support the motion because overall you're in support of it, but you do have an issue with one of them to let council know, then maybe you didn't agree with that. But you can't vote on part and not the other.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So again, I believe we have a motion on the table, and we have a second by Commissioner Hanson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4 to 2. Commissioners O'Donnell and Commissioner Erickson opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on a recommendation to Town Council?
There are not.
All right. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do not have a report. I just want to thank the commission and the members of the public who've participated in this large project and getting it to this point and then moving it on to the next level. They did a great job working through the issues.
Well, thank you, staff. You've been a great support to us. And thank you, commissioners, for your hard work. Commissioner Hudes, followed by Commissioner Erickson?
I just wanted to make one point, maybe to be carried on to the council, and I think, and I appreciate all of the assistance from staff in sorting throughout these many, many issues. This is really the first test of the North Forty specific plan. I do think that there may be some areas that we've learned in this process need to be addressed before another application comes in, either for this area or for the other areas. And I will make a list of some of those and send some of those ideas to staff, because as with anything this large and complex, as you go through this process, you learn about where there might be areas for improvement in order to get what the town would like to get, particularly in the area of dealing with objective standards relative to housing. I think that there were a number of areas where if the committee had known that we needed to translate some things in the vision statement into objective standards, perhaps more work would have been done on some of those areas because they were quite important to the folks who wrote the vision statement.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudes. Do any of the other commissioners have a matter to bring to the attention of the commission? Commissioner Erickson?
I have a much simpler question. Are we meeting on the 20th and the 27th?
We will not meet on the 20th. The 27th is a regularly scheduled meeting, so there will be a meeting on the 27th on other topics.
That'll be quite exciting.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your participation.